All right, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call the Nottingham Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, June 12th, 2024 to order. Before we begin, I'll go around the room, starting on my right, and have everybody introduce themselves, please.
Skip Severance.
John Moore.
Joyce Bascom.
Edward Veal.
Drew Stevens.
Doug Cummings.
Larry Haney, SRPC.
Excuse it. And at the moment, we do not have our alternate, Mr. Davies, and Mr. Evans is not present at the moment, so any votes will be a total count of six. So we're gonna, we have a number of items on the agenda tonight. We will take them in order, but one item I want to make sure I don't miss before we begin, it's real quick, is we've continued a conceptual application here to allow us to have some time to get response from town council. We were hoping to have that by tonight. We did not receive it for tonight, so the agreement was that we would continue due June 26th. So if anybody would like to make a motion, it would be that continued case 24-007 for Mr. Bassett to June 26th at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I oppose. That motion carries 7-0. Mr. Evans is here, so now votes will become seven. All right, that was the motion by, who made that motion? Mrs. Bassett?
Mm-hmm.
And second was Mr. Stevens.
Don't have to answer.
All right. Thank you, everybody. So that was just kind of formality. So we'll take the items in order. The first case is a continued case. It's case number 24-001 LLA and 24-002 SUB. Foul zone for Raymond Road. Application from Joseph Falzone on behalf of Forgotten Mountain Realty Trust requesting approval for 16 lot open space subdivision off Raymond Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire. Properties identified as tax maps 69, Lot 17, and 19. And to bring everybody up to speed on where we are with this, we've had this case before us for a little while. Originally accepted the application as complete, had the development regional impact finding, had had some revisions to the plans, had sent it out for third party engineering review, and then a second part of that sent back out for engineering review, limited engineering review. And I think that catches up to, and had response from both Nottingham Conservation Commission, after that, had a chance to meet with them, and Lambrey River Advisory Commission or Committee, LRAC, for this project as well. So I'd like to welcome applicant. If I missed anything, please, from your side, please feel free to correct me or address that.
Good evening, everyone. Scott Cole from Beers and Souches. I think everybody knows Mr. Falzone, developer. We also have Joe's legal counsel, Tim, who is sitting behind me. We've made quite a bit of progress since our last meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for updating everyone. We had a good meeting with the Conservation Commission, it was last week, to review the last minute items for the project and our dealings with New Hampshire Fish and Game. I believe you have a letter to that effect that was distributed.
Today.
Today.
I have not read it yet.
We've been diligently working with New Hampshire D E S on the AOT response. We got initial review comments from them, and we sent out a response with revisions to them the end of last week, so we suspect those will be in quite shortly. We do have another letter that was given to us from CMA last Wednesday, the day the plans were due, so there's a few more comments. It would probably make sense to go over that. Obviously, I didn't have time to make any revisions to them with the deadline being the same day, so there's a few items on that, and I'll just wrap up. But in general, we are really down to the nitty gritty stuff now, and there's nothing major, so I'll just try to hit the main points. After receiving this letter, I did call Owana. I know there's a lot of things going on, however, we've been in front of the board for quite some time. There's a number of items on here that have either been voted on or kind of completed months ago that the review engineer keeps commenting on. So they either need to, I don't know, be made aware of the decisions that are made here, or read the notes, or something. So I'll just get into it. Basically, on the second page is where the commentary starts. And more or less, this whole page has to do with requirements of building envelopes on an open space subdivision. We actually went into length on that one meeting, and the chairman acknowledged that that's just not a requirement in his zoning to provide that for an open space subdivision. That's listed here multiple times. In the email that Josh sent to Owana, he even states, "So I think it needs to be on there, but I can't find it." You can't find it because it's not a regulation. So I believe the plans that we submitted meet all the requirements. Skipping to the bottom, protection of existing natural and historic features. We went over this at the last hearing, I believe. Basically, it has to do with all the, you know, the open space, the protection, the buffers to the river, and the major wetlands to the south. That's all being protected in perpetuity. If you go onto page three, 3A, the plan should contain notes, et cetera, regarding preservation of trees. I believe Mr. Falzone stated himself, he would be trying to preserve as much landscape and trees as possible. That kind of goes without saying for most developers, so I believe that that's a comment that needs to be addressed. Fire protection, we've said from day one that they're gonna be sprinkled, so there's no need for a cistern. There will be additional details required for that. They recognize pressure tanks and whatnot, and that's usually to be provided at a later date because that's building specific. 15.3.2 driveway design. We have provided proposed driveways as necessary in the regs. Now the engineer at the end is requesting that we show culverts. It kind of goes without saying, if there's a swell, there'll be a covert needed. We tend not to put culverts on the plans because, you know, 50% of the driveways usually slide a little to the left or to the right, which would make our math no good. So it's understood that where there's a swell, a covert would always be required, so we can certainly add that to the plan.
Those would be shown on as-built plans at the end, correct?
Yes, yeah, that's typically where we do. That's a good point. 15-5, we've talked about this in length, you know, obviously, a sidewalk would lead to nowhere. There are trails on the premises that people will be able to use within a subdivision. We have provided access from them to the open space and the roadway, so we think that is sufficient. 15-6-4, road in cotton fill. Ledge cuts are limited to one horizontal to one vertical slopes with a foul zone outside the right of way. Their comment is applicant response is unclear as to what their intent is if alleged slopes are constructed. That's very clearly shown as your regulations depict it. On the typical road cross section, you have a one-to-one slope if it's ledge, and then it's left with a shoulder, so it's pretty self-explanatory. 17-1, utility structures. In short, they are asking us to provide specific locations for transformers and J-boxes and whatnot. We have not received that yet from the utility company. Nine, nine sent on a time. If I do a preliminary schematic of that, they change it, so then it just leads to confusion as to, well, whose plan is right? Well, it's not mine, it's the utility company. So we try to hold that off, and again, Mr. Chairman's comment, that's a perfect opportunity to document that, is with an as-built later on. Going on to page four. Number one is about the access, that one's taken care of. Under appendix four, fire protection, again, redundant question. Appendix five.
Sorry. This is the second time this one's come up. Do they not see the note on page 16, or I guess it slipped to 18 now, but did they not see the note? Do you?
I don't know. I've responded that it's been there three times now. It's good.
Okay.
They reiterate a lot of comments. Number 5-1, again, this is a little, it kind of puts a designer in a tough situation. In short, I wrote what your town cross section requires for pavement. The design engineer said, even though it follows town regulation and should be updated to current pavement norm culture, pavement is now generally specified with, and then it gets into specific details, I won't bore you with that, but. So I followed the regs to a T, and then they criticized it, and then they want this data. If it's new data, that's fine. I asked, give me what you want, but it makes our job a little bit difficult if I'm supposed to follow something that is actually not in the regulations. So that's kind of how that question came about. So I said, please tell me what you want, and that's what's provided. So going forward, you know, maybe the board should look at that being an update in your language. The ledge, the cut will be one-to-one, we went over. Godrail, we talked a little bit about that last time. We went in length about the godrail. I applied a detail, from a detail they provided me with godrail ends and location. I followed it to a T, and now they say, oh, now the godrail needs to be three feet off edge of pavement. I'm more than happy to do that, it doesn't change anything, I'll just move it over. The first design was based off of information they had sent, so it's kind of led in the wrong road. But again, that doesn't change anything, that's actually more, Mr. Evans, to what you were asking, was a wire buffer to the godrail instead of the fence being at the edge of pavement, now it'll be three feet off.
And I did look at the, thank you, I did look at the road specs in the back of our regs, and that's what it seemed to show, too.
Yeah. Yeah. So that will be, that will be updated, as I said, it's just a typical detail. Sheet 6 of 13, and we've actually, this was asked a couple of times, I believe, Mr. Stevens actually asked about this prior. There is a, I guess, an easement to control an existing or non-existing beaver dam. It's just a legal note, the surveyor found and forwarded the note. I honestly don't know any more about it, but that's been, that's been stated a couple of times now. Sheet 14, again, I didn't go back and, well, for one, these plans haven't been reprinted because, as the board understands, again, the yield plan was approved probably three months ago, so it's an approved plan. I can, on the final plans, you know, if there's a misspelling, we'll certainly correct it, but review of the approved plan really shouldn't be taking place at this point. Sheet 18, again, they make commentary to the approved New Hampshire DOT permit plans. Very early on in the process, the previous vice chairman had said, anything within the state's jurisdiction is a state's jurisdiction, is the only ones that should review and approve. So we haven't gone back and made any more revisions to comments that apply to a previously approved state plan, so we'll just leave it that. So in more of changes required, on the next page on 5 of 5, these are adequate comments from the review engineer, sheet 19. So number one, the proposed rim elevations, and I'll just kind of paraphrase it for you. Basically, the review engineer is saying the rim elevation should be a 10th lower because of the sag of the curve and the 2% slope on the pavement. I actually agree with him after we saw the numbers. In order to do that, you would have to lower the pipe elevation, which caused a conflict with the amount of cover over the pipe leading to a bio-retention area. Now, that catch basin previously had a 15-inch RCP, and there was a difference of opinion on the thickness of the wall of a concrete pipe, which is the, caused the cover issue. So our engineer, that actually did the drainage analysis, went back and looked at it. That is a standalone catch basin on the other side of the road, so that can actually be reduced to a 12-inch pipe instead of a 15, and that takes care of both issues. We can reduce both rims and grates and go to a 12-inch instead of a 15, and then we meet the foot, minimum one-foot cover for RCP. So those changes will be made in agreement with the review engineer. The next comment, number one, has to do with the electrical, we touched on that already. Number three, since covert number two pipe head walls extend on the prior property, these areas should be included in the drainage easement. On the revised boundary plans, we have actually provided, I believe it's a 20-foot grading, drainage, and utility easement along all new lots. We know this is a relatively site with some good grade to it, so we applied that wave, that easement, so beyond the right of way, we still have 25 feet to work with in an easement, so everybody understands that. Number four, basically, they want, we did all their under-drain comments, and they came back and want some more, basically around the cul-de-sac. We have no issue with that, I will add that in the next iteration of plans. And then a couple more comments, going back to the utilities, which we would rather wait Basically, from here on, it's very minor technical drainage, so I have to do the under-drains, the length of an under-drain with a flushing basin, which we find no issue with. And then very lastly, because we are changing the godrail location, I will have to update the road cross sections, makes sense. And that's the last comment there, where it has to do with the godrails. So again, a lot of reiterated comments, some have already been established and completed, some, there are some new, but relatively small in general, and really, within one more letter, we should be all wrapped up with CMA, I believe, at this point. So outstanding right now, I believe Thursday, there's one more meeting with Fish and Game. Joe and Mr. Quigley will be going up and actually meeting with New Hampshire Fish and Game. This will be the second meeting on the, basically the finalization on the protection for the turtles. The first meeting, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, the requirement may be to actually enclose the, any of these disturbed area, including lots with silt fence, so the turtles can't get into any of the disturbed areas and get, you know, caught in those areas, so. That will be completed, we expect AOT very shortly, when we see their final, and then state sub will be shortly after that because they won't issue until AOT is done. So at this point, I believe we're in good shape. I know the, Tim can certainly explain better than I, but I know all the legal documents have been submitted. I don't know about review yet, to be honest with you.
Yeah, we've not, I know our legal counsel is, we're seeing delays in responses, we have a few things out to them outside, not this case, but separate from here, so we do, if, which is usually a condition anyway, if this gets to a conditional approval point, that would be obviously part of that, so.
Correct.
So thank you for sending those.
And there's approximately.
Scott, do you have a page six of five on the back of the CMA thing? About a pond, pond plan and construction details?
Where are you?
It says page six of five, but you went to five of five.
That's not, that's.
Has a pond plan, sheet 22?
Just a misnumbering from a.
Mine?
Six of five.
It's a misnumbering on the CMA, on the CMA letter.
Oh, CMA's letter, I'm like.
He did cover that. Thank you for covering that, Steve.
Apparently, they added some. Yeah, that's their letter, I don't know what to do.
And based on your experience and where you're at with Fish and Game, with what the feedback that they provide you to date, do you foresee any required changes from them in the permitting process that would be substantive changes to the plans?
No.
No.
The only big requirement that I tried to contain was the 5,200 feet, or one mile of silt fence. And essentially, I went to a meeting about silt fence and turtles overall for the state, and they wanted, so I've agreed to it. The only thing that can happen at Fish and Game is it can get more restrictive. They're not gonna get any, they only had five comments, we've agreed to all.
If anybody wants to see, it's very hard to see where you are. There's a red line on the colored plan, because it was after we submitted plans. Basically, any disturbed area that's out, that silt fence needs to be around it, so it encompasses the whole site.
And I'm gonna speak for myself as the chair, so anything that was redundant within the CMA's review, obviously, I think we can always be better, we always strive to be better, so if there's anything that we weren't clear on in asking them, or making sure that they were aware had transpired, I think we can always do better with, to try to make sure that it's clear for them, because I don't want them doing unnecessary work.
Absolutely.
Or be clear for you all as well. So I do appreciate that feedback, and I think in the future, we'll try to make sure that we are better with making certain that they know that something was either discussed and agreed to, or if it was a waiver, you know, that they are aware of that, or any other kind of motion to make sure that they're aware of, things like that. Appreciate that. Anything further, before we bring it back to the board? No? No, I think I appreciate it. All right, thank you so much for the review. I can, I know that not everybody's had a chance to read the Conservation Commission letter, I can read that out or go over the points of it. So we did receive a letter from the Nottingham Conservation Commission dated yesterday, I believe their meeting with the applicant occurred on the 3rd, so, and on the 6, I believe were two dates that they had on here, so that's kind of the reasoning for the short notice on the letter to us, but. So they go over a little bit of the history of that case and their meetings with the applicant. They mentioned the Fish and Game letters, I'm just trying to summarize it quickly for everybody. Have you had a chance to read this book, too, to make sure? Because if it says you've agreed to something, I want to make sure.
Yep.
Okay, so you've had a chance to speak, so.
Got to use river stone.
One notice, it was, you know, it was discussed and agreed by applicant that they would adhere to New Hampshire Fish and Game requests within reason. The commission requested that applicant keep the commission informed by sharing any emails from New Hampshire Fish and Game regarding the project. There's concerns about the Farnborough Pool proximity, but all of them are within designated open space, and the closest one was determined to be 185 to 195 feet away. A retention pond was eliminated, which reduced the amount of disturbance in the open space between Lot 9 and Farnborough Pool C, which the commission viewed as positive. Culverts near the beginning of the roadway were discussed, and there's the addition of riprap in apron areas with smooth river stone, increase the size of upper covert, and an amphibian ramp to the lower covert. Update plans are going to be provided. And then a couple of items where it says they've agreed, so applicant has agreed to use river stone in the apron areas, use concrete for the culverts, increase the size of upper covert to 18-inch, provide amphibian ramp for the lower covert. Applicant has agreed to review the New Hampshire Fish and Game guidance document for wetland road crossings for blending turtles, and applicant will provide updated plans, digital hard copy to the commission and planning board. There was a note about the need for simple pamphlet outlining best practices, informs residents of best practices to minimize environmental negative impacts on the property was discussed. The commission agreed to develop such for the new landowners, so it's something on the Conservation Commission that's taking that on. The possibility of eliminating more two lots was briefly discussed, and applicant indicate this was not an option. This is based on this discussion above, the commission gives conditional support for the project, case 24-002-SUB, with the following stipulations. The applicant adheres to the New Hampshire Fish and Game recommendations and requests within reason upon final review, including the five items in the May 8th email to Mr. Quigley, and any recommendations for obtaining the AOT permit from N H D E S. The review from the New Hampshire Natural Heritage Bureau report does not indicate any additional restrictions to the development. The applicant keep the commission informed by sharing any emails from New Hampshire Fish and Game regarding the project. The applicant will review the New Hampshire Fish and Game guidance document for wetland road crossings for blending turtles, other stipulations previously agreed to by the Several outlined, the commission's May 7th letter to this board, medallions remarking the bounds of the open space, reduce self the roadway deed restrictions for open space, including that non-mobile fertilizer pesticides and herbicides be restricted and have the open space to be monitored at the cost of the HOA. The commission recognized that as a permitting agency and acknowledges its role to recommend actions and practices to minimize environmental negative impacts while enhancing the protective features of the development project, and they're grateful to the planning board and applicant team for the opportunity to review, discuss, and provide input for potential projects such as these. So, just want to make sure, so I've read that off, and there were some things that's indicating things you've agreed to, just want to make sure that those sound factual and accurate, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions from the board on that?
I think you could work as an auctioneer.
Ah. That was me slowing down, so.
I apologize.
This is part of the case filed as well, it's online.
Sorry.
When, I saw something from AOT, I read it earlier, but when does AOT approval come? And you said there's Fish and Game that's finishing up their business now?
Yeah, so we responded to D E S AOT last week, I believe statutorily they have, I think it's 30 days to respond.
Okay.
They usually don't go back and forth, it's kind of a one-shot deal, you either get it or you don't. So, you know, we clouded every revision they asked for and made all their changes, so I think we're in good shape, but it'll probably be within a couple of weeks. And they won't issue till Fish and Game is satisfied.
And we don't know what Fish and Game have come up with, you've met with them, though, to talk about what their requirements or what they're thinking?
Yeah, and they issued their review letter, and they agreed to all the changes.
Shortly, hopefully.
And I had a couple of questions, so I appreciate that you included us on the AOT response letter so that we could see their comments and, you know, what your thoughts were back on that. I had a couple of questions in regards to some of those items, just three points. On one of the, the plan indicates a dam permit will be needed, so you have to go through the dam bureau, is that gonna be, does anything have to change within the HOA, the covenants, anything like that, to incorporate if there's some kind of dam involved now?
No, it's just basically, it will be an additional permit required under the AOT permit itself for a dam. One of the detention bonds, the one on the north side, is over 10 feet from what they determine with the water will be standing to the very end toe of slope.
Okay.
So by definition, we need to get a dam permit for that. It's just a simple review process, you know, the state basically records it in, you know, in perpetuity, it'll be recognized as a state-recognized dam at that point.
Okay.
And, you know, again, that's in the open space, so that would, excuse me, within the homeowners association.
So no, no additional language would need to be added to the HOA or the covenants indicating that?
No, just a design aspect.
Responsibility of maintenance and whatever else.
Yeah, that's already in there, because it's a drainage feature.
There's a section, a question about the roadway, roadway length, we just need to confirm that the longest point on that road is 2,000 feet or less within our zoning, so.
Yeah, that was, I guess, a discrepancy between the plan and not including the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
That's been fixed.
Okay, so, but the actual roadway is less than, because our zoning or subdivision regs require it to be less than 2,000 feet.
It is, yeah.
It is, okay.
It's only like 1,700 to the road.
I believe that's what we had, okay. And then there was a comment, and I see him in some spots on the plans, but, all right, I could see where there was a detail about it, but can you confirm where the maintenance access roads are for the pond, the detention ponds, I think it was six, seven, and four or five if it was renumbered? I know sheet 22, I believe it was, shows an access road cross section, I can't tell where that actually is, and that's actually, that is included in the disturbed space?
Yeah. So they had us add an access road, so if you look at sheet 22, the three bio-retention ponds that are in the open space towards the rear, well, we were the property down the hill, so we've added, I'm trying to find the label, a gravel access road.
Between what, 11 and 12?
Yeah, so that, basically right above bio-retention pond number five, there's a gravel road now that's proposed that will tie into the existing logging road which leads up to the cul-de-sac, and they added a detail at the bottom of the page, access road cross section.
So the, so I thought those were just, shame on me if this is wrong, I thought those, the items that were shown there might have been just the original.
So we've added, I'm trying to find the label, a gravel access road.
Between what, 11 and 12?
Yeah, so that, basically right above bio retention pond number five, there's a gravel road now that's proposed that will tie into the existing logging road which leads up to the cul-de-sac. And they added a detail at the bottom of the page, access road cross section.
So the, so I thought those were just, shame on me if this is wrong. I thought those, the items that were shown there might have been just the original like trails that are on site.
The one on the right is, you can see it's a little bit different line weight. I apologize that the proposed, I did have a label. It looks like it went away on me. But where it forks from the existing trail down across those ponds, that's proposed. So if you come off the cul-de-sac, like 100 feet, it forks to the right. From there on, that's all proposed to all three bio retention areas.
Okay, so nothing, that's actually crossing like that piece that goes at lot 12, that's not, that's not?
No, that's existing.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's not going to be a?
I'll make sure I add my label back in for that.
And is that, that area, that's, I know it's probably, by the time you add it all up, it's probably a couple thousand square feet total, maybe 10,000 or so. Is that included in like within the AOT and like the total disturbed space?
Yeah, it's still minor. We can look at it, but they wanted the comment. So I mean, I think they're happy with.
So yeah, that'd be one of my questions is just to make sure that that, on the plans that that's shown. Just make sure that that's kind of clearly identified and I'm sure again that that's within.
No, I agree. I'll boil that up a little bit better.
Thank you. I think that was my three, my three new questions from, and I think you've addressed the majority of everything else that I had previously submitted. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Other than that, the public hearing is still technically open, so I can reopen the public hearing to where it's been continued, so.
Just, I'm not sure I'm missing it. Yeah, along the road where you're picking up the drainage, coming down the bottom section of the road and going across the front of neighbors' lot, sorry, I don't remember your names. Is that an open culvert or is that an underground pipe there?
Oh, that'd be totally buried on the ground.
Okay. So what, you're just going to build the shoulder back up to whatever's there?
Yeah, basically what his front yard is, he actually wanted trees removed anyhow. So he's making out by Joey doing that for him. But basically they'll, you know, they'll dig a trench, put the pipe in, re-low it, seed it and you'll never know it's there other than the pond way down at the right.
And is that in the state right of way or?
No, we're not allowed to. It's in the private property.
Okay, I think so. Thank you.
And I have a, I did go, I did read through the open space easement deed. Not to try, not as a lawyer, but there's a lot of language in here that perhaps could be cleaned up a little bit. It seems like any place the town is, it should be town of Nottingham. There seems to be something related to an open space in an open space conservation area. Two different things. And I don't see the conservation area identified. So it seems like it should just all be open space terminology.
I would agree, but yeah, we can nail that down for you.
Yes, look through that. The other thing, this seems like a deed that would be provided in some fashion.
Restriction.
And it's a restriction, right? It uses the term grantor, which in your case is Joe. But it also uses indiscriminately, I guess, the homeowners association. So at some point in time, I'm assuming Joe will no longer own that easement?
Correct.
Is that correct? All right. So this kind of a document would get passed on at that point in time, right? So it appears that, and I'm not saying every place, but the grantor probably should be grantor slash association is the terminology that's used.
The guy behind you is?
I know, he's doing that. It's okay. And there's a couple of typos, but I'm sure we'll get those away. But those are the, those are the comments I had about that. Rest of it seemed to be workable.
Good, thank you.
From the lawyers.
I did have a question. Thank you for bringing that up. I did have a question on the, on the vote. You're going to maintain it or the developer putting a vote will maintain it. I just, there's a gap in my brain about when the town takes over this and when the association is responsible for plowing or road maintenance. Is that specified?
That's a good gap.
So is the, does the association take over the plowing and road maintenance at that time?
At a certain point in there, it talks about we can turn it over when it hits X occupancy. And I don't know exactly when that.
I didn't see it, but yeah, you got like 75% or something.
But this is a small subdivision. So you're going to get in and out of there in a couple of years. It's not like it's going to go on for a long time. And they got to go to town meeting to get it accepted. Town doesn't have to accept it. You see what just happened on my, you know, seven people didn't show up and now they got to go back again.
And one of the questions that, and this may have been addressed when you met with the Conservation Commission and if so, I apologize for redundancy. One of the comments from the Lake River Advisory Committee was about the, who's holding the easement? The conservation easement? So I believe it was proposed that the HOA was going to hold easement. Is that still?
Would the Conservation Commission have enforcement rights?
Okay.
Says that now.
All right. See, I know, I know they're done in multiple different ways. You know, oftentimes it's the land trust or someone else. It's, but they usually want bigger, bigger projects.
I've got a question on the, I think this is the, maybe the easement. It is page five, part G. It talks about the open space. If the association votes, they can use 5% of that open space to build a playground or a baseball field or something like that. Is that a standard like reservation that's done in these deeds?
Sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't. But sometimes they want to do a community garden.
Sure.
And they use that. So they have the right to do that? You usually won't see them want to spend the money to do a ball field.
I'm just thinking in terms of protecting that open space, seems like being able to use over three acres of it for something in the future doesn't really protect all of that open space. But that's my opinion, I guess.
Well, that was kind of why I asked about the conservation area because the open space doesn't have to be necessarily conservation area. It could allow the capability for something to exist. But on the plans, I didn't see anything called conservation area. So that's kind of why I raised that issue. I don't, I don't know that, I don't know.
I mean, I'd certainly entertain the board if you don't want gardens or a playing field there. It was a good thing for the residents.
Yeah, I think potentially, I think to clarify on that, if there was a specific area maybe called out because they have it kind of nebulous, potentially means that to an unassuming person or unknowing person, they could potentially put these areas, you know, within an area that they shouldn't be putting them like with an armpit set back or something like that, so. I mean, I do know, I was trying to pull up our open space regs as to what, you know, because I know they do talk about common areas and which can be allowed and how to kind of try to identify how best to address that, to allow it without making them necessarily come back before us or get a violation from any permitting agencies.
I think your term is right, common area. I remember that, but I'm not sure I know where to find that.
So within our, within our open spaces zoning portion under nine D, up to 30% of the designated open space may be transferred to the common area if permitted by conditional use permit to be used for the following. The planning board may impose specific criteria or restrictions on such uses as deemed necessary to support the goals of this section. Agricultural, such as community gardens, agriculture, sorry. Active outdoor recreation uses, including formal playgrounds and fields as well as accessory recreation facilities, clubhouse, swimming pool, et cetera. Parking areas for open, access to open designated open space. Individual community wells provide that this was approved as part of the subdivision plan. And there's more of them there. Any other use that is agreed upon by the HOA, consistent with the purpose and objectives of this section. So I guess that's, that pushes you into conditional use permit territory.
Yeah, I mean, if they're within a buffer, they got to go to the conservation.
Or if they're within that designated open space at all.
Right. So then they.
For those purposes, they would have to get a conditional use permit.
That's fine. And if you don't want it in there, we'll check it out.
Yeah, I think because of a conditional use permit, I think unless there could be clarifying language added into that.
It says it voted by.
It's written by legal lawyers and they hashed that piece out internally, but we want to make sure that we don't set anybody up for failure.
It says it voted by the association, but you know, maybe you would add in review approval by whoever, conservation or planning.
No, it still says us for as a conditional use permit would be required for all five of those.
Is there an area that would be suitable on this property?
Yeah.
There is?
Two or three acres you have.
Okay. Is it road connected or?
It's trail connected. You say road, woods road.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I meant a budding the road kind of. No?
Yeah, I mean, you have to have a part where you want to put it.
Steve, which?
Might not be three acres, might be.
I have.
Yeah, okay.
Make it clear, there's a big area.
Yeah, a lot of it seems.
Yeah, no, there's actually a field through the road.
Oh, really?
Someone planted a long, long time ago.
Oh, cool. Can it be hay?
You have a pony.
Well, you have a pony. I'm not going to hate.
So I guess based on that and the fact that it would require a conditional use permit to have it allowed, I think either clarifying language in that section of it be added or remove it. It's, that's again, kind of, I don't know what the process is after the fact or a change like that within an HOA. So if an HOA decided after the fact that they wanted to do that and pursue a conditional use permit, how hard that would be to change the language there.
We'll get that clarified with the legal teams.
Any other questions, comments?
I've removed it.
I have a question, if I may. I'm reading on the additional restrictions. It seems to be highly restrictive, a lot of the stuff. And I'm wondering what would be the enforcement? Who's going to do the enforcement? Like, you're not supposed to have a clothesline that you can see from the street. Lady puts up a clothesline, who's going to go tell her?
Your neighbor. It reads their HOA.
Yeah, association.
So it's all, it all goes back to the HOA. You can't put a motor home, a camper, you can't put it on this line. If you want to store it until next season.
You can put it in your garage.
Yeah, you know, it just seems very restrictive, but I'm a little surprised by that.
Yeah.
That's because we have our own property and don't have HOAs.
Right.
That's all counseling this stuff.
Okay.
Remember the talk we had about the price of homes?
Yes.
Their concern, you know, you drive around and you see people leaving their snowmobiles, they're motorized and it's not running, it's broken down. And they don't want to pay $700,000 for a house and have a neighbor doing that. So their recourse is don't buy there, you know?
All right, just, so it's a matter of we don't want it to look ugly.
Yeah, that's all that is.
Well, they can all look the same. It doesn't have to be an ugly scenario. But.
We're talking about an HOA that doesn't exist yet, so who's making the rules?
The HOA.
And some people don't want any rules and will shy away from this.
And they can change the rules. So they have to get 60%.
The association can.
Yeah, 66%, I think it is.
All right.
And they change them sometimes.
See, that's the thing is if you want to be able to do what you want, you don't buy there.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, same thing is to be said about buying into a community. We have zoning and subdivision regs, things like that. So if you don't want to play by the rules that are enforced within the town, you can still try to do so and try to get waivers and variances and everything else or go to the next town that doesn't require that. So it's the same, so they're buying something that they know and it's either added value or detractor and it's up to that individual.
That's all I have.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and just because the public hearing was, is continued, I just want to make sure that we, in case of any new comments. I'm going to reopen the public hearing. It is 7:44. So anybody that would like to speak for the application and support the application, please come forward first. Anybody that's against or just has general questions about the application, please come up after. And if you can, just make sure you state your name and address for the record. And something I failed to say earlier, if you did not sign in in the back sheet on the paper on the back, please do so before you leave. So we use that for our minutes to record everybody that's present. Page four, against or general questions?
May I? May we? You're French. Can't stay away. Maybe? I'm Susan Booty, Conservation Commission.
Sam DeMara, Chair of the Conservation Commission.
I have, we have a couple of concerns with the open space and how it is monitored. The open space deed will be held by the homeowners and that cannot be changed because it gets filed with the Rockingham County deeds. The HOA can change rules that don't have to apply, that do not apply to the open space restrictions. As far as monitoring the open space, Mr. Falzoni and Mr. Cole at one of the meetings, not the last one, but the one before, talked about having homeowners pay a fee, an annual fee that will hire an independent agency to monitor the open space to make sure there's no violations. We had a couple of suggestions for the homeowners to use. Ellen Snyder of IBIS Environmental Consulting. And then there was the second agency that was mentioned that I was not familiar with. And if this report comes back with any negative comments, then that's reported to the town who can put a lien on the homeowners until they rectify the violation. And nobody wants a lien on their house because then they lose value, they can't sell it or whatever. But that was the muscle that Mr. Falzoni suggested that we entertain.
And it's in the HOA documents.
Oh, it is.
Oh, yes. It's always there for that.
Okay, we, the commission has not received a.
Oh, because they were supposed to get you a copy. We gave it to them two weeks in advance, or 12, 12 weeks.
Yes, it is in there.
Good.
It's all in.
So we told them at the hearing that they could get their copy.
I didn't make the last meeting though, so that was out there. Did you get a copy of the HOA?
They're online too?
I don't remember.
Online. It's okay.
Is it just posted? So we.
I didn't actually set it in, sorry.
Oh, so it would be great if we could get a copy so we can review and make recommendations, suggestions or give accolades.
And it's a draft, so.
Oh, that's right.
It's a draft.
Okay. So comments are welcome.
Yeah.
Yeah, so in general with the HOA. In general with the HOA encovenants, we do review them, but kind of like the engineering review, those items are generally drafted, almost always drafted by lawyers. So we allow our town council lawyers to speak the same language in general to review those items and they oftentimes connect back and forth to come up with and alleviate concerns. Obviously, we want to make sure that things are enforceable, clear, things of that nature. So I appreciate that because again, we, we as this board, you know, we're familiar with the open space and conservation easements and all those types of things. But there's multiple ways to handle them. So it's, that's why we look upon Conservation Commission, the applicant, their lawyers, our lawyer, make sure that what we're doing is, makes sense.
Okay.
And that's why I didn't post them, because they weren't approved by town council yet. I can if you want. And I've never had to send it to Conservation Commission before, but I will from now on.
Okay, so if you can send it, so let my, let my home ready to be ready. And the leverage that the town would assume is something that we have not brought up to Ellen White yet. So we need to run that by her and see if that's an appropriate mechanism to make sure people behave.
The town administrator?
Town administrator. And additionally, listening to recreational space, I think it needs to be defined where this is going to be low-hated. Town administrator. And additionally, listening to recreational space, I think it needs to be defined where this is going to be low-hated so it'll be the least impactful for this very rich downtown.
Of course, we can help.
Anything else, Sam?
I can take it out too, if you're more comfortable, so. I don't have any problems. I'm a support fan, I'll take it out.
Does that 5%, would that include trails, if they wanted to make trails?
Yes.
There's already.
Well, to enhance.
Right.
This is a nice button board. So is that in that 5% or is that not?
It would be, because it would be access, but also the shape of it, so you want.
No, so, no. So a permissible use of open space that are generally permitted, and I do not believe they require any additional stuff from the board, zoning, is forest management activities in agricultural cultivation and pastures provide that all applicable best manager practices are employed. Passive non-motorized trails and recreational uses such as walking, hiking, bird watching, skiing, and snowshoeing, horseback riding and cycling. Then the next section is D, where up to 30% of designated open space may be transferred to a common area through conditional use permit for the following agriculture such as community gardens, that, you know, the items I wrote earlier. So, so it sounds like from within our ordinance, passive, non-motorized trails and recreational uses for walking and such are, are allowed.
But you're saying you want that removed?
No, 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 that that would be included in the percentage of recreational space access to within the open space. Does that make sense? But also the shape of the open space, the less perimeter, the less edge you have. Is it there?
It's, it's all the way around, isn't it?
No, 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 the recreational area that is placed within the protected open space.
Well, it's in.
Three acres. Right?
I'm sorry, John.
What was the percentage, which we thought was three acres, right? That comes up to.
Yeah, it's like 16 something acres.
3.4 is what I got. About 68 acres of open space. 3.4.
So I don't, I don't want to get too caught up in that. We can let the applicant come back, but I believe what I was hearing them say is they'll probably just remove that piece if it's a, if it's a point of contention.
So you're, you're saying that the trails are part of the open space concept already, so that doesn't necessarily get into that 5%? So they cut that out and it's not gonna, I've just seen trails being used on that site. It's a beautiful site, some special areas in it.
Well, that's why I was asking if we're taking that away, because that would be a shame to take away the trails.
Well, that's, isn't that the whole idea of conservation, that, you know, people can enjoy it?
Yeah, the trails would stay though. That's not, I don't think that's under any, you know.
Well, when he said remove it, I was wondering, was that saying?
He meant remove the 5% transfer, you know, of the open space to be.
A common area.
Yeah, a common area.
That's how I interpreted it.
That's what we're talking about, I think.
Uh, I got confused, sorry.
Like I said, we'll, I'll let the applicant speak at the tables to just clarify, if you want any attention there.
Ms. Moody, I've got a question. Maybe you'd be able to, so the, this fee that's paid by the homeowners to the HOA that then hires a third-party monitor.
Yes.
Is that something that the HOA could decide, we don't want to pay for this? We're gonna change the HOA so that we don't pay for this. What happens in that case?
I don't know. But that's one thing we have to talk with Ms. White about.
Okay.
Because this area is so precious, it needs to be monitored annually. And those of us on the Conservation Commission who have taken up such projects in the past, we no, we no longer are able to do that. We're getting old. And Sam. We're over 100 years old together. More like 150. Oh, my God.
You guys want wheelchair paths? Is that what you're talking about? You want wheelchair paths?
Was there any, any other items, Mr. McNamara?
No, not, not this evening.
So I want to tell you that the two companies that you talked about are not.
Ellen Schneider, but I don't remember the second.
Well, either one of them are not in here, so, and I wouldn't suggest putting them in here either. But do you want to have something in here that says they're approved by the NCC or something like that? I mean.
We have a licensed engineer, a professional, doing. It's the same way I did it in Ryan.
Yeah, but as long as you're the grant, as long as the grantor is doing it, I don't necessarily have a problem because you'd be, they know who to.
Because they have your license.
They have to do it, but they can't change that clause.
Yeah.
They can't change that restriction.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
That, that would get recorded, these bylaws and declarations would be recorded prior to any deeds going out, so those are part of those deeds. Just like in a condo, they approve the whole condo bylaws, put them on record, then every deed says see the bylaws, see the rules that are recorded.
I do think it's important so that we get those sooner, so that we're not paying the town's engineer now to review and without your comments.
Yeah, yeah. Well, this is the style, so thank you.
If there, if there are any comments that are added for that or would like to be submitted, please send them in to Land use clerk, if we can make sure that town council.
Okay.
Is made aware, if anything, we'll make sure that anything we talk. If it's been proposed, get communicated.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Anybody else for public comment for the public hearing? I will close the public hearing. It is 8:56. Uh, 7:56, sorry.
Yeah, you certainly are.
All right, I'll welcome Mr. Falzone, please. So I understand, just to make sure, I know you were answering, because you're right, right up to the speed here, but, so there was, if I understand correctly, I believe the piece about the 5% can be transferred to common area, I think you were indicating that's probably just gonna get removed, okay? And then the, you, I think you were indicating that there is already verbiage within the proposed documents about the requirement for the open space monitoring and how that's handled and.
Annual, it has to be a licensed person and they have to copy the con con.
In the town.
Within so many time, days.
Yep, in the town, I think.
In the town.
Any other comments regarding anything that was just discussed?
No, because if you follow the trail and you remember, we had three meetings with the Conservation Commission. So there's a trail of what we agreed to, and I'm the one that tried to insert everything, so that I wouldn't have to pay to have it done two or three times.
Sure. Any further, any other questions or comments by the board before, I think we're at a point now, you know, unless there's additional comments, questions, anything that's come up tonight, where final action on this application would be pertinent, either conditional approval, denial, regular approval. So I've got a list of items that I can go through if we get to, if, that if a conditional approval is, is proposed. I want to make sure that these items aren't missed for the, for the record, because it's again, more complex cases tend to have more button-up items.
Do you feel you have them all?
I feel like I have. I can read them off. These are what I have noted in Mr. Haney was able to come up for us as well. So a lot of them are standard, but, well, so submit town plan copies with professional seal and signatures, submit to the town original mile or professional seal and signatures to be filed through the registry of deeds. We sign those, they go back to the applicant, the applicant submits them and gives the documentation number to the land use clerk. Applicant has to ensure all fees paid. Applicant must receive all state and federal permits, including unlimited to AOT and DOT, enter DOT and fishing game, all of those. Yep.
Discussion on that. So is it better to wait? Are we expecting AOT or fishing game might make some substantive change that we should be waiting for?
Yeah, in the, in the past, in the past, these, those items have generally been a conditional approval, because we know that the state agencies can take longer. But that was one, my point of questions to the applicant was, do they perceive in their, in their professional opinions, having gone through this a number of times, any substantive changes that would have come up out of those?
Right.
And I believe they said, no, so it would be.
They would have been in the first, they would have been in the first letter, which we've already received.
All monuments set and certified, road name approved by the board selectmen, an electronic version of plans, including as-built plans and project completion to be approved by the town engineer designated. We have to make sure we list any waivers granted on the final plan set. All permits approved, list all permits approved by the state and other agencies on the final plan set. List all conditions of approval on the final plan set. Conditions subsequent only, if any. Add a plan note indicating that as-built plans shall be delivered to the building department prior to certificate of occupancy being issued. There's a couple of items I want to make sure, because we're, we haven't always been good about calling this out. I know Mr. Falzone has had it with other projects and it's probably familiar, but there's two sections about requiring basically bonds or performance guarantees for roadways and improvements, so.
And you know that that law is, that statute's changed with the state. We don't have to post a bond until we want an occupancy permit. It's a new state law, if you're gonna send it to you, I can send it to you.
Sure, so if that's, if the RSA has changed, it's made that difference, because in the past, we always required it prior to the start of any construction, especially for the roadway.
Not anymore.
But if that's changed, then why would you post a bond after the construction?
Because they tie it now, if you haven't got a copy of the RSA, you usually get it. I've already gone out and been able to get my, my bonds back, but the decisions now say that you have to arrive at the amount to build the entire project. That's the bonding amount that you start with. Everyone agrees to that, the town and the applicant. And you can't get an occupancy permit until you post the unfinished work. The reason for that is the new federal financing laws, when I go in to get a loan, if I'm building a $2 million road and I gotta put a $2 million bond up, it ties up, so the Builders Association of New Hampshire lobbied and it's been changed. I can copy you with it too.
Yeah. So what happens if in the middle of the project, you file for bankruptcy and the town has an unfinished project with no bond?
I guess you can ask the Senate that, and state who voted to change.
What's the point of it?
Well.
But, yeah, well, I guess, I just want to make sure it was clear that at some point, at some point in this process, a bond is sure to, performance guarantee is gonna be required. We can definitely hash out where in the process that is done. If it's still, the town, if the still town can still legally enforce it before any construction begins, make sure the town will legally enforce it. If it's, the RSA has changed, then that's fine. Couple, I'll just read through the rest and then we'll go back. Submit HOA documents, declaration of covenants to be reviewed by town council, approved by the board, file the registry of deeds, that's standard. And then there's just the timelines, which are in our subject, our regulations, but we usually either set a different sunset clause basically, or, or make sure, try to make it aware. Two years to commence active and substantial development. There's an option for a one-year extension, and then about how, where that, unless you spend at least 50% of the total cost of all the improvements within four years for the project to consider invested, but those two really aren't conditions, they're just. Some people, sometimes we get stuff missed within our subdivision where the risks are lengthy. So, and then our, any kind of condition, if we do a conditional approval or a regular approval, then you can, the, those are usually have a one-year timeline on them. Those were my notes. Anything else would have been just anything that was agreed upon tonight about, you know, the things that were agreed to within the engineer's review. I think there was a couple of items that you mentioned, the underdrain changes.
And the dam.
Room elevations. Things of that nature, yeah. But that's, I think that's well documented, so.
I'd like a motion to conditionally approve the application based on those items that you have listed.
I'd like to discuss a little more about, like, what we, what we as a board might want to add conditions-wise to kind of improve the design of this subdivision as well. As we all know, this is a very, very important habitat for wildlife. The green and red is both most valuable habitat in the region and in the state, and that covers the entire site. So I'm glad to hear that there are going to be silt fences that are going to be surrounding the site. That's gonna go a long way to keeping the turtles that are in the area from coming into the site. What I'd like to propose is that we also add construction timing conditions, so that construction is not occurring when there is turtle activity also happening. Like, for example, now, if the silt fences haven't been put up, this is the middle of turtle activity. And so bringing big equipment into the site now and doing a bunch of large alteration puts the, the population there at, you know, imminent risk because disturbed soil is something that they would be attracted to as well. So I'm proposing that we limit construction activities to, for this year to take place from no earlier than October 15th. And that if they extend beyond April 1st of next year, that, that silt fence does need to be installed and maintained. And that is, you know, in line with, you know, our, our job as a board to reduce adverse impacts for the site. And I think that would be a very important way to reduce the risk to these vital, critical populations of endangered turtles that we have in our town by making this stipulation that construction happen only when turtle activity is not occurring or building silt fences if it does extend into that time.
So I'm just gonna do a point where, so we're kind of in a weird spot where as soon as the motion is started, we have to either have a second to the motion or potentially the individual that's making the motion can withdraw it.
I'll withdraw it for a second.
To allow that kind of, any additional discussion like that, because once the motion is made and if we can speak towards the motion, but not any, cause some changes, so, but Mr. Severance has withdrawn, so that, that does bring up, allow us to have that discussion, so. I'll, I'll go right to the applicant on that. Is any of that, that was just covered, within the New Hampshire fishing game permitting process or the New Hampshire Heritage Bureau and those items, do they address timelines? I know we've addressed it on other projects within town for other applicants as well, and had agreed to to have, you know, major site clearance done within a certain window.
Yeah, they, well, putting the silt fence in isn't major. They use a small trap back hole. Because you're only digging in an area where hay bales and silt fence, and they go in on the existing trails. And that machine can trap us to where they put in. So it's not like there's 10 machines there doing that. They're not moving any dirt. They're digging a trench. There's a specification that they gave us that it has to be, I don't know if it's two feet, but there's a certain distance.
Six inches in the ground.
Six inches, six inches in the ground. The machine digs six inches, push it over. If we hit rock and stuff, they're making us come up with some type of anchor system, like big rocks and so forth. He's correct, no major construction they will allow until after that, is it?
So would, but is there a, anything generally within that, that's, that's, so usually it's a major clearing, so obviously the, the cuts and the fills and if there's, you know, large forestry operation, you know, site work being done. Is there generally any restrictions as to timelines on that when that can be done?
Sometimes there is, because they do that with the bats too.
That's right.
You know, you can't cut trees. Yeah, they'll, they'll give us those parameters.
So I guess, you know, it's up to the board on this, if we request specific dates, you know, or set, setting kind of items like that, that's the will of the board and also, you know, to work on with the applicant. I believe we did that for the project off Smoke Street recently, and there's been a few others as well where there was some agreements. I don't know if that was, something that was can discuss during the Conservation Commission or not. But I guess is there a, is there a big reservation from yourself if, if we were to add such a condition to the?
Yeah, because we went to three hearings to the Conservation, more hearings than I have ever gone to prior to me. And we discussed the turtles, and we discussed any major disturbance has to be within certain months. So no major disturbance is gonna take place until the silt fence is in. And if a machine is walking with two laborers and they see a turtle out there, they're not gonna run over the turtle.
Oh, sure. I, I wasn't, I'm sorry, I was trying to get back to the, the major disturbance that you just mentioned. that you just mentioned, not the silt fencing.
Actually, I think the major disturbance date that they set up did, was the dates that you, you mentioned, April 15th, I think?
April, October 15th through April 1st is typically the dormant period, yeah.
Right, we can't, you know, we can't do anything unless the silt fence is in during those dates.
My concern about the silt fence being put in, it's nothing about, you know, turtles being injured for that silt fence, I like the silt fence being put in. I guess my additional concern there is that if it gets put in now, will there be turtles entrapped in the area that's then going to be, you know, developed on, because you're putting in the fence midway into the season, the nesting season?
I guess my question is, who's going to know yet? I, I don't know, you know?
So what you're asking then, Drew, is that you don't want any construction to start until April 15th?
Until October 15th.
Excuse me, October 15th.
And then any construction that would continue past April 1st should require a silt fence to be installed. It sounds like that will happen either way, but that is my strong suggestion, given the...
So nothing be done until October 15th?
Until October 15th, yes.
And are we going to make that a condition? Is that what we're talking about here?
That's what I'm suggesting, is that we make a condition of approval.
Perhaps we make a motion on, or discuss amongst the board members and try to come up with some sort of agreement on that part. I see a lot of the site being uphill from, you know, the wetland areas that are, you know, that they're, they're surrounded 68 acres, and that they're concentrating the open space in the middle of this parcel to leave those protected areas adjacent to the wetlands and ponds and all the, you know, really very nice areas around there. The, the only thought I would have is that the beginning part, where the road crosses, where the culvers go under that, there could be wildlife trying to cross there, as opposed to somewhere else, but it just kind of a low spot, the water actually runs right now.
Right now, yeah. That's going to be built up 16 feet.
So it, it's actually... Right, so how do they build that up without, you know?
You don't, I mean, with the 18-inch pipe that's there, and the 10, or 12 or 10-inch pipe, there is no real wildlife crossing access. It's an 18-inch pipe that runs 65 feet, so there isn't...
So this, this link...
So that's beside...
Those dates are actually specifically called out within the New Hampshire Fish and Games letter back to the applicant, back on a, a date off, off of here, they was given quite good, but. What is pros being due to the project, and what is the expected duration of the project to start full build? There's a possible time restriction for constructive, construction activities to not begin until after the active period of turtles, after April 15th, and if activities are continued beyond April 1st of the following year, a silt fence barrier will need to be installed and maintained from April 1st through October 15th for the entirety of the project. So that, I believe that was a response between Mr. Valzone and Kevin Sullivan at the New Hampshire Fish and Game. So that's, that's saying, you know, that they, that's a possible time restriction that Fish and Game may impose. We can impose, impose it just to make it clear and get rid of the question of that. It's up to the, to the board, so I think a motion is... I would say a motion is probably appropriate, that if that is going to be added as a potential condition to let the board have a vote on it.
All right, well, I will motion that we add a condition that the construction activities not begin until after October 15th of this year, and if activities are to continue beyond April 1st of next year, silt fence barrier needs to be installed and maintained from April 15th, or, sorry, April 1st through October 15th.
Is there a second?
Didn't you just say that the silt fence was going to prohibit the movement?
If you do it before the season starts, yeah.
Okay, after, after the, the next season, they will have found their way around or something?
Right, so, so, you know, April, construction activities, October 15th through April 1st, just fine, no silt fence. April 1st, silt fence goes in, because that's when turtles start waking up and, you know, moving about and potentially going onto the site. So no worries about turtles being on-site between October 15th.
I see, okay.
April 1st, but after that, yes, there is the risk of them coming into the site.
I'll say it.
That's a motion by Mr. Stevens, a second by Mr. Severance. Is there any further discussion regarding that motion?
I was just going to say, I would think you'd want the silt fence up and completed before, prior to April 1st, so that you're not putting it up on April 1st and then moving it.
April 1st date does lead the act, so, you know, really, April, end of April is when you see most of the turtle activity really happening. Some start waking up at the beginning of April, so that April 1st date is one that is protective of the early risers even. And installing it sooner than that, I think, like, might be an issue with security.
I was thinking the end of March, but whatever.
Yeah, it does put a constraint on these guys as far as when they could build it. It takes a few months to put in roads in.
Sure.
And they, granted, they have a couple of months to get AOT and all the final approvals in place.
Again, it's a, you know, it's something I feel that enhances this site's development and makes it much less of a risk for those populations that are surrounding the site.
The, the state has allowed us a sway. Actually, they allowed it right here in this town, in Stevens Hill Road. They gave us an extra 15 to 30 days. I wouldn't have a problem agreeing that no silt fence go in before September 15th. We're not doing anything out there until September 15th.
September?
So it's only a month, and I think it's a reasonable compromise, because we're really bound by what the state says.
If they say something.
Yeah, they already said they want the silt fence.
They said they, they left it vague, they said there is a possible timing restriction, so.
Well, he said they want the silt fence.
So that's, that's why we're trying to, clearing it up now, to make sure that everybody's on board and understands, you know, regardless of what Fish and Game says there, we could be more restrictive. Or just as restrictive. So we have a motion and second to add a possible restriction as outlined by Mr. Stevens and second by Mr. Severance. Is there any further discussion from the board on this motion?
If we did want to scale it back a month, would that be, how would we go about doing that?
Scaling it back?
If that's an agreement.
What do you mean?
The October 15th date.
The individuals that made the motion would have to amend their motion, so.
Scaling it back to September 15th?
Say.
So they, I, I would find that to be a reasonable compromise. So I will amend my motion, can I amend my motion? Or do we have to do a new?
You can amend.
I'll amend the motion to restrict the construction to activities starting September 15th instead of October 15th.
Mr. Stevens, you second the amendment? Sure. All right, so now we have an amended motion from Mr. Stevens and second by Mr. Severance. Is there any further discussion on the amended motion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed.
That motion carries seven, zero. All right, so that brings us back to either continuation, final, which if we're going to continue, I think we need to make sure we have very clear items that were, we need addressed. Final approval with conditions or, or denial, which would have to have a, have the reasoning listed as well when they need a motion like that.
Ed, did you get monuments in there?
Yep.
Okay, okay, I did, I don't know if I've noted that. Also, understanding this bonding business is changing, you know, if there's not a bond, then, you know, are we still having road inspect, are we having a third-party engineer checking their, their work along the way? Is that part of the?
Yeah, within our subdivision regulations, it calls out the whole road requirements and as-built plans, and when they're supposed to be monitored, and, and everything else like that.
So is that part of the approval, that, you know, there's monitoring and engineering checkup on these?
I don't think we need to put it as a list of conditions if it's within our subdivision regulations, so there's other items that we don't have to specify out within any conditional approval that the applicant still has to adhere to, is my understanding, as, as long as we have it. The town has it backed up by our regulations. So the, me mentioning the bond or performance guarantee tonight is just, I didn't want any applicant potentially blindsided when they go to start doing work and then cease and desist, gets issued, because they hadn't met that piece and it was lost within the regs. So it's just me making sure that one was aware, and the board is aware, that there is a process for that, which may have changed as to timing of it, but it's still there.
The key word I heard Joe say was unfinished portion. And I don't think anybody's going to get an occupancy permit on a dirt road.
Correct.
With the binder coat and all that kind of stuff, probably isn't done, but.
Who, who's looking at whether there's six inches of gravel, or two inches of pavement, or three inches?
That hasn't changed.
Yeah, it hasn't changed, that's still there. So I'll do it again, if you would like me to. With the additional timing on the construction.
So, I believe, I believe Mr. Severance is indicating, he's making, he's repeating his prior motion, which is to approve the application for case 24-001 and 002, with the conditions previously read, and the new condition of, that was voted on by the board with the, the timing of, of construction. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Evans. Any further discussion by the board? Only item I would add that we failed to say within those conditions is obviously we do have two cases here, technically, but they're kind of hand-in-hand. It's 24-001, LLA, lot line adjustment, 002, S U B subdivision. I think it's fine to handle those as one approval. Obviously, there's an understanding there that the lot line adjustment, subdivision, not going to withdraw the subdivision or anything like that, the lot line adjustment would just go away, because they would never pass the deed.
True. Would you like me to add that, or you're good? It might be a good idea to add.
Sure.
Sure.
If, if you can think of a way to word that clearly.
Conditional approval, I, I would...
Amend.
And my motion to indicate this conditional approval is for application 24-001 lot line adjustment, and 24-002 subdivision Valzone Raymond Road.
Mr. Evans, you, you agree to the amendment? Or second the amendment?
Yes, I, I do have a before to say this. I, I, Scott mentioned a couple of conditions, and do we need to list those out specifically, or?
Yeah, I believe I, I got them.
And the ones that he's already agreed to.
Okay, check, I second.
So we have a motion, a second, an amended motion by Mr. Severance and a second by Mr. Evans. Any further discussion by the board? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed.
Motion carries five, two, zero. So we're, we should always have a findings of fact on any approvals or denials, so I'm going to read, I'm going to create a findings of fact as I see it, and let the board decide if, if it fits. This, these two cases were conditionally approved in accordance within our subdivision and zoning regulations, based on multiple meetings with the applicant between this board and the Conservation Commission and others. Understand that they must also follow state and federal permitting processes, and through this process, their, their plans have been revised to meet the intention of our, of our regulations.
That they did, we went through the checklist and everything is satisfactory on there?
Everything has, has been either met or conditionally met.
And we've reviewed waivers and yield plan and approved those?
Correct, yeah. So is anybody else, is that findings of fact sufficient? All right, so thank you very much, obviously that's a one-year window on the conditional approval. If you feel like it, towards the end of that one year, please make sure to get a, any kind of extension request in, at a time.
Just a heads up, the legislature is extending the one-year, and they're pushing the five-year to ten years.
Pay everything for the builder.
All changes, and, and obviously, yeah, we usually get the RSA updates, if, especially highly pertinent ones, like the findings of fact that we now do, so if they're changing that, or restricting landing ports, timelines, that's, we'll look for those, so, all right. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
So the next item on the agenda is case number 24-008, LLA, Witham, Three Halls Way, and I apologize if I misspoke the name, but application from Judy and David Witham requesting a lot line adjustment. Property is located at Three Halls Way in Nottingham, New Hampshire, identified as tax map 33, lots 21.
We're still having a meeting, please go out in the hall.
Let us hold off a moment, just to let everybody that's clearing out, clear out.
Sorry, I find it very rude.
No, I appreciate that. It's impossible for me to pay attention to anything that's being said on the conversations that are going on.
So again, I'll just, this is for case 24-008, LLA, Three Halls Way. Do we have anybody for the applicant before, that would like to give us a quick rundown as to what you're proposing and your plans?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Peter Landry, a Landry survey, representing David and Judy Witham. David is to my right in my attendance. As you mentioned, the property, the subject property is number Three Halls Way. It's currently a three-acre lot that frontage on Stage Road and Halls Way where the driveway access is. David and Judy's other lot is adjacent into the west of his house lot, which is currently a four-point acre, a 4.8 acre lot of land, which is now vacant with frontage along Halls Way. The proposal tonight is to take the two existing lots of record, and adjusting the common lot line between the two, to enlarge David and Judy's existing house lot at number Three Halls Way to 5.8 acres, and reducing the vacant lot on Halls Way to a two-acre lot with 200 foot of frontage. At this particular point, the final monuments have not been set. There is, needs to be a front right corner set, and a midpoint along a line that's over 400 feet long. The back rear corner is a drill hole in the stone wall, and that is there found and identified. Because the lot is 4.8 acres, the vacant lot, and it's being reduced to, to, to a smaller-sized lot, it falls under a jurisdiction of the DES Subsurface Bureau subdivision. Look at what they're looking for when you reduce a small lot, they're looking for a state subdivision approval to make sure that the lot still meets the requirements for a four-bedroom minimum state lot. And that's why there's two sheets submitted. One is a clean sheet, the lot line adjustment plot of land, which would be the one we're looking for the planning board to record. And the second sheet is, looks very similar, except you'll see it has the additional test bits, topography, wetlands for the state DES subdivision approval submission, which at this point has not been applied for, but we anticipate that approval. And as I mentioned, the monuments are not in, and when they're in, we would anticipate turning in a monumentation certificate. So one other thing, after the application was submitted, I had hired a certified wetland scientist to go through the property to look for any vernal pools. That's, I've noticed in a couple of last few meetings I've been to, that was something they, both either the zoning board or the planning board had asked, it's also something that we have to address. It's also something that we have to address at the subdivision, uh, uh, approval stage. So I hired an independent soil scientist. I've supplied the, the board with, uh, his findings, uh, so you do have a copy of that. If you look on the, the smaller lot that we're reducing, tax map 43 lot 33, if you look in the middle of the lot, you're gonna see an area with a circle that says VP in the middle of the wetland. That is the, that's the location of the vernal pool. You'll look at the report that I had handed in, I only gave you one copy, you may have to pass it around, but it, it, it describes, uh, uh, what the process and it's got pictures of some, uh, spotted salamander hay masses that he found in the, uh, vernal pool area. So that's identified for further protection of that, that area of the wetland. So that's it for quick presentation.
I've got a few.
Well, before we, uh, so procedurally, so first item, first thing that we have to do is the board is act on application completeness. Mr. Heady, if you had a chance to review the application, was there anything that he found that may prevent us or preclude us from accepting the application as complete? I do know we have a waiver submitted.
Yeah, there was a waiver request submitted for some of the plant items, uh, a lot line adjustment, it seemed reasonable to, uh, the, the waiver request seems reasonable and I do believe that the application is complete for the board to.
Is there any further discussion from the board regarding application completeness? Otherwise, a motion, uh, to either approve the application as complete, deny it as incomplete, or request additional information.
Can I ask one quick question before we?
Yes.
Is this, you said you have to go back to DES, but I guess it was a little confusing. Is this still considered to be a minor lot line adjustment in that it's not creating a new build of a lot?
Yeah, just, yeah, let me make that a little clearer. Yeah, we're starting with two lots. We're ending with two lots. We're, it's basically shifting the area around. Because the vacant lot, it does not have a septic or a 4K area, has never been addressed with a septic design, it's a vacant lot. Because we're reducing that size, the state DES requires, and it gets missed quite a bit in this process, but, uh, the state requires that we assure that the lot that we're reducing is still quote a buildable lot at the state standards for, so that's why they look at this lot line adjustment as a, as, they use the word subdivision, but we're not creating a new lot.
Yep.
They just do that so they can send us through that process, so we do the test pitting, you know, look for ledge, do the wetlands and, and all the requirements that you would do if you were crea, if you were creating a lot, but we already have a lot.
Yep. Okay. So, yeah, just, that just answers the question of like, we're starting and ending with the same thing, so I think you do have everything before you to make, to render your decisions.
I do have a quick question. Mr. Landry, what is a barway and what is lot 32?
What is lot 32? Oh, well, that's, uh, that is a lot that is on your town accessory map 43.
Yep.
Identified as lot 32. And that is why it's shown that way.
And it's owned by the?
Yeah, it is owned by the Abutter, Green and Roth, yes, to the, to the northwest. They own both as it's labeled, lot 31 and 32.
So you show a 25 foot and a 50 foot setback, um, is that from that, this lot line and that, that other?
I think I know what you, I think I know what you're trying to get to.
I'm gonna pause that question for a moment because again, right now, we can only act, we can only ask questions regarding application completeness and then, once that, if the, once we, if the board accepts the application is complete and we can get, we're taking the ownership of it and we can get into those higher level conversations.
I make a motion to accept the application as complete.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Stevens and second by Mrs. Bascom, uh, to accept the application as complete. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? That motion carries seven, zero. Alright, the, the other one to get off the, the books, uh, is to make a motion regarding if this is a development of regional impact. It's, uh, something that's good to do on all cases, so.
I'd like to make a motion that this is not a development of project that counts as a.
You made findings that it's not.
Development of regional impact, that the board made findings that this is not.
Sure.
A development of regional impact.
Second.
Thank you.
Good. Motion by Mr. Stevens and a second by Mr. Moore in that this application is not a development of regional impact. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? That motion carries seven, zero as well. So just for the audience, uh, anybody that isn't familiar with the process, so we have some procedural items that we have to do first before we can get into higher level discussions, so, uh, the first is acting on application completeness, determining whether it's a development of regional impact, which would then kick off additional regulatory items for the applicant and us, uh, but for something such as this, a lot, minor lot line adjustment, that's usually not regional impact. Um, so those are done. So now, now we're through those and we've accepted as complete. Is there anything you have, Mr. Landry or Mr. Withham, that you hadn't had a chance to say regarding application yet before we bring it back to the board?
No, I'm, I'm ready to answer some questions or Mr. Evans, if you'd like to finish that question.
Now, now's the time.
Be glad to answer it.
Okay, yeah, so there, there are two setbacks on the left side of lot, one for 25 and one for 50, so, um, I'm assuming that's from the lot line and that lot 32 is not, um, even entering to that setback weight.
Uh, no, what, what I do, we're measuring, I think you said 25, it's a 20 foot setback, that's for accessory, that's for garages or septic systems, it's, this, we've got layering of, of setbacks and of course, the setbacks are measured from the property line.
Okay.
In this case, the property line is labeled the stone wall.
Stone wall, okay. I just, and I saw the barway and I saw that.
Okay, you asked me what a barway was.
Yes.
It's not what you think, but what it is, it's a, uh, it's a, it's an opening in a stone wall is what it is, an ancient term, um, to, more than likely, they use that for access to get into this lot years and years ago. It would probably be the access for the new driveway that they would put in. So, I mean, I'm looking at this bar as an existing opening in the wall, uh, potential driveway for site distance.
So, um, I, I don't know if there's a requirement for busting through the stone wall in a location if that's too close to lot line?
See, there's already a, uh, opening in that wall. It may need to be widened, I'm not sure. It, it is, I do believe there's a setback, the town prefers 20 feet or something and, you know, if they wanna move it, we'll move it. That's more or less, I would think, at the building department level. But again, that, you could look at that as an existing driveway.
Yeah, as I say, for any, that was one of my, my notes was, you know, where's the proposed, uh, curb cut or, or, um, you know, driveway access, because we usually have that shown on plans. So if you're indicating that it would be on the, uh, western kind of most portion of the, uh, of map, 43 lot 33, smaller than two lots, that's probably, from the plan, that looks like the best location for, for site distances, not having, not being on the road or.
No, that's.
I can't tell if there's anything else that would preclude, make the difference about better, but that looks like the best spot for a curb cut within obviously the 10 foot setback or 20 foot setback we have for, uh, for new driveways.
Alright, I have a couple of comments and a question, I guess. In reviewing the, uh, plans here, I noticed that there are a number of, um, Abutter, uh, names where the last names are switched. Um, I can tell you which ones.
That wouldn't surprise me, but just point that out, please.
Uh, Green and Roth, um, Joy, oh, so that one, the, with Joy, it's, it's, the name below is spelled as Richard J Roy and not Joy, and it should be Joy, I believe. Um, so that appears a couple of times. And then there's another one, tax map 43 lot 20, it says Gardner and, oh, uh, I'm gonna slaughter that name, so, um, the, the two last names on the owners listed are just swapped. The only other comment that I had is being, I know that it was interesting looking at the history of that road, hallway road or halls way or hallway or it's gone through all of those apparently, um, but in the plan, the owners of record, it says Three Halls Way with an apostrophe, but elsewhere on the plans, there's no apostrophe in Halls Way, so just a minor thing, but being consistent there. So here on the.
I'm not sure which one it is.
It's Halls Way with the apostrophe and everywhere else it says Halls without one.
What was the second Abutter? I, I got, I've got the Roy and Joy that you mentioned, I can see that. What was, did you say it was lot 20?
Green and Roth in third, lot 31 and 32, those two last names are swapped. I think it's Alan N Roth and Kristen R Green.
Okay, I'll double check that.
Um, and then it was tax map 43 lot 20 that had the same thing. Um, I think it's, again, I'm gonna slaughter that name, so I'm not even gonna attempt.
In our appendix, uh, our subdivision regs, we have an appendix of all the town road names.
Oh, they got a, they listed?
An apostrophe for Halls.
It has an apostrophe? Okay, great.
I believe that.
Did you know, did you know that, David?
I was born there.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, and I guess, uh, so those are my comments, uh, looking over this, my only other question is that the zoning ordinances say that each lot has to contain a 200 foot by 200 foot square fit for building. Is that the case here? I don't, I, I.
You know, that's funny you brought that up. Let's look, let's talk, let's look at that, let's look at that regulation.
30,000.
Or 30,000 square foot contiguous area.
I thought, I thought somebody might bring that up.
Sure.
Section, Article 12, section C, 2E is what you're referring to.
Yeah.
When you read down through that, get past the 200 by 200 for new lots.
Yeah.
Or the 30,000 for new lots and get to the part that says, however, a pre-existing non-conforming lot, which maybe we are, maybe we're not, I believe we are.
It isn't non-conforming.
No, it isn't.
However, a pre-existing, well, it may and may not be.
You'd have, you would have to show the burden of that. If you're trying to say that this was a pre-existing non-conforming lot of record, that, that burden is on you, the applicant, to tell us that, because you're taking a, a five acre parcel that would, you're not, you haven't shown us all, all the areas, you've asked for a waiver for it, within that transfer, transfer area, know if that's buildable or not. So you'd have to show us that the current law actually does not have, meet zoning regulations that we're not creating a more non-conforming lot. Otherwise, has to adhere to our zoning, which is to show, that was one of my questions was, there's no calculation as to having how much contiguous buildable area there is there, is there 30,000 square feet?
Well, yeah, well, I, I can understand what you're saying, so that's, uh, well, whatever it is, I've reduced it, so that's, it goes against your, 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 your thinking, I guess, as this not being a pre-existing lot.
It's a pre-existing.
Non-conforming.
But not, not conforming, we don't know that.
But if it, but if it had less than the 200 or less than 30, it would, it would be looking at a variance by if we reduced it any smaller than that. I mean, if we didn't have it to begin with, that would make it non-conforming, so, but, and I haven't given you enough information and I'm not gonna ask you to believe me.
Yep.
But if it was 29,000, didn't have a 200 by 200, it had 29,000, that makes it a non-conforming lot, doesn't have the 30. So would I, would, would I then, my thinking was, when I did this, that, and I may have to give you more info to prove that, because I don't expect you to believe me, so if it's under 29,000, you know, it doesn't have the, the 30,000 contiguous, it's now a non-conforming lot and therefore this would be allowable. So I would need to give you more info, which we have, um, but I determined it was non-conforming and I brought it to you without now having to prove to you that I have less than 30,000.
Right, we can't, as, as this board, we, we have to be cautious about making, either making something that is conforming, non-conforming, or making something that's non-conforming, more non-conforming.
Well, that, yeah, but, okay, I understand that, but this says if I have a, a pre-existing non-conforming lot, then I'm exempt from the, them having to provide the 30,000, shall be exempt from this provision, which is what I was, the road I was traveling down. Uh, let's see, however.
But you, by doing a lot line adjustment, by definition, it's a subdivision, so that.
Well.
So that, by definition, within RSA, a lot line adjustment is a subdivision, it's treated.
You're not creating any new lots.
That pre-existing, you're changing, I would think you're changing the lot of record date to what the, you know, new, new date would be, but that would be something we'd have to send to council if it came to us, um, and that was being proposed, but in the past, the guidance, I believe we've received as a board is, as long as we're not making, as long as we're not increasing in non-conformity, it's okay, but if we are increasing in non-conformity.
Yeah, but you've got an exception for that. I agree with you, I agree within theory, but.
Well, the exception is within the zoning, it's not within the subdivision regulations.
Well, it's in there, it's within the writing of that section, it says exempt. It says, however, a pre-existing non-conforming lot, which you're not convinced you're, you're looking at, which I can, I can appreciate that, because you don't have enough info. Um, but if I were to show you that, it, the next thing says shall be exempt, that's pretty definite, that's, I think, I'm not a lawyer, uh, like Skip, but, uh, the, uh, shall be exempt from this provision, it almost seems like you've already, they've thought about the fact that it's an existing lot, two existing lots, and they've exempted that part as long as you end up with your, 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 still your lot. We're not making, you know, the only thing we're doing is we, yes, we, we would be shaving that 29 or 28,000, whatever was less than 30, but once it's less than 30, I'm already out of that arena of having to prove the buildable that, this 200 by 200 build of the 30,000, because it says I'm a non-conforming lot, shall be exempt. So my thinking is, is that we could do what we did. Otherwise, we're sit, we're stuck in a situation where we can't move a lot line around without variance, I guess is what you're saying.
Well, but you.
Well, isn't that the argument? You could, you could create 100, 100 square feet of contiguous area.
Well, we have other, you'd have, see, that's why we go through the state, so, approval process too.
But we can be more restrictive than the state.
I'm sure.
So again, there's an argument, you know, you haven't proved out one way or the other to us. Once you bring that before us, if that's the argument, we can definitely.
Well, I mean.
As a board and then, you know, get, get council's, uh, opinion on that, but.
Well, what if we just, with, with the idea that if you, that I'm going to show you that it's less than 30, because I've already gone through that exercise, um, then what? Now we're gonna, I mean, we've already, we're discussing it right now, where do we, where do we wanna go from there? Are you, are you saying that you, maybe you don't agree with the logic or what it says here in the regulations?
Yeah, could you, could you, show me where you're pointing that to, by the way, again.
Oh, it's Article 2, it's on page four.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Article, it's E.
It's right on the top, huh?
I thought you said Article 12.
No, yeah, Article 2.
Article 2, number 2, letter E.
Yeah, C2E.
Yeah, I mean, there's additional language at the end of that too, so there'd be a lot of discussion within the board on that. And again, I wouldn't feel comfortable with that, because, because that portion of the zoning can present, help prevent, provide relief to anybody that has a lot of record that wants to do things with their land, but by changing that, that lot of record, you're, it's, it's no longer, it potentially could no longer be that it's meeting this pre-existing portion, that portion of it, it would, it would nullify that, but that's nothing I feel comfortable making a determination on. We haven't had that proposed to us before in 12 years that I've been here, so that would be something I would look to our town council to make sure that we're not either imposing a burden on the applicant unnecessarily, uh, or that we're not doing something that is against, you know, what we should be doing legally for the town itself.
Here's a question for you. Before the parcel gets split, how the parcel sits right now, is there a 30,000 square foot envelope on it to build?
That's what I'm asking, was gonna ask.
No, it does not have one.
On the parcel before you split?
No, there's not, there's not 30,000, because I thought, I actually thought what this gentleman drew, Mr. Stevens was talking about, I said, geez, once I read that section, I go, well, if I have 4.6 acres and I have 30,000, now I have a conforming lot. Now what you're talking about and, and all you're talking about reducing it at that point, that goes against zoning. And I think that's why the forefathers, whoever got involved with this and wrote this, recognized that, because let's recognize what section we're in. We're in, we're in, we're in regu, requirements for a lot.
Right.
And this is saying, well, if you've got a lot, if you've got a pre-existing non-conforming lot.
And the pre-existing non-conforming, I've been around for a while, just like you, that was really based upon when written, was for all the pre-lots that were out there that were under the two acre ordinance and that's so they could build houses, i.e. the lots around the lake, around this, and that's where non-conforming came in. the lots around the lake, around this, and that's where non-conforming came in, where you wouldn't have to meet this envelope, and that's where you'd go under non-conforming.
Right.
Lots of record of five acres, eight acres, whatever, and you can't find a thirty-thousand envelope on it? I mean, that's just wasted land, I mean, it's just, I don't know what you wanna call it, you can't find an envelope on that much land, that's thirty thousand square feet, then you're a problem.
Unless you're talking steep slopes area, or something like that, but this is just on...
It could be a mountain, right, side of a mountain or something, but again, so my question is that the large parcel that's sitting there now, before it gets subdivided, is there thirty thousand on there?
No.
There isn't thirty thousand square feet on it?
Not by your definite, no.
So I've got a follow-up question, then, if this main, you know, the undivided lot or unadjusted lot right now doesn't have thirty thousand, but the adjusted lot that's two acres has just shy of it, how is all of that buildable area just sequestered in that one two-acre lot of the land? There's not a hundred more square feet somewhere on the rest of that, you know?
Maybe I...
It has to be contiguous.
Contiguous, sure, right.
I'm not, I don't know, I haven't even looked at any of the, I haven't looked at whether the existing lot with the dwellings on it has thirty thousand.
So I'm talking about the parcel A plus the lot thirty-three, right, the existing...
Aren't they showing a buildable envelope here?
Yeah, so, well, again, where this, what John was mentioning, where this is located, if John is mentioning, you know, non-conforming was frontage in area, then this whole blurb we're talking about is, it should be in a different section of your zoning, but it's in, the section it's in is in the area of the two-hundred-by-two-hundred or the thirty thousand. So obviously, it's talking about the two-hundred-by-two-hundred or the thirty thousand requirement, right? So, pre-existing lots, I think, again, they, like John was saying, they recognize that those smaller lots perhaps, or, you know, again, may not have this thirty thousand or two-hundred-by-two-hundred. See, when you're creating a lot from scratch, you've got the leeway of making sure you meet all of these requirements, or you don't have a lot in this town.
You are creating a lot by, so you're changing...
Well, I already have, okay, we're starting with two lots, we're ending with two lots, so, and I'm shifting...
You're changing a lot of dimensions, you're, in theory, so we're not worried about the buildable area for the larger lot, because we know that you're proposing to increase the land size, so there's no way that that is gonna increase the non-conformity of the lot that has the dwelling on it. What you haven't shown us is that you're not increasing a non-conformity with the proposed smaller lot, so, and you're asking for a waiver within that area, but you're telling us that there's no buildable area in there, so you're not showing us any kind of documentation, and I think the waiver is premature in that case, if that area hasn't been surveyed, or isn't gonna be shown on the plans, and you're trying to tell us that there's no contiguous area that will get you thirty thousand square feet, or that is larger than the area that you're showing, nor have you shown us how much contiguous area is even being proposed within this buildable envelope.
That's right.
So we have no idea how large that buildable envelope is.
It's less, it's less than thirty thousand, and I understand, I didn't show that it's existing less than thirty, I can show it's existing, but it doesn't seem to matter that you're making a different argument, because you're not accepting the fact that that provision is exempt.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying that...
Oh, maybe I'm misunderstanding.
...within the zoning ordinance, I don't know that the process of changing a lot line, and therefore, changing the lot, preclude, that may preclude that exception. That exception means the lot as it is now would have exceptions. If you changed the lot...
The lot as it is now.
The lot as it is now.
But you're in the section, so I don't understand how that...
There's nothing that says...
Why would that have anything to do with anything?
I'm not gonna argue this point with you, Mr. Landry, I told you, our option here is, you need to show us that you don't have, that this lot is, is it not becoming more non-conforming?
That's not, well, that, again, you're going...
You would need, okay, you would need to show us that this lot is already pre-existing non-conforming.
Okay.
And then, show us that you are not making it more non-conforming.
That's not what this says.
That is something we know we cannot do, we would be violating our ordinances, to make something that is...
You're not, because you have an exception, it says.
So you think...
Am I the only one, am I, does any...
I'm on the zoning board, and we cannot make a lot more non-conforming.
You're theorizing that you could take this lot line and move it within twenty feet of the side, and make a twenty-foot-long corridor, because it can do whatever we want, because it's exempt.
I don't think you'd be, that wouldn't be buildable, would it?
But you're saying it doesn't matter, because it's exempt.
No, I'm not saying that, because I'm not sure...
You're saying, you're saying it's exempt, you're saying it's exempt from the ordinance, that you don't want...
That's what the zoning, that's what it seems to say to me, I'm not saying it, it says it in here, I'm trying to repeat what it says.
So, this is where we're at, so, well, we know more material, more information's needed, I think it's very pertinent that you show what is in parcel A, because maps show a potential stream coming through there, I don't know if that's a perennial stream, ephemeral stream, or, because then we have wetland ordinances that apply, the vernal pool, we need verbiage put on about vernal pool protection, and generally, that is a vegetative buffer that's required. I'll just go through my list of items, and then we'll open up the public hearing as well.
And also, if you finish reading section, or E, the one we're looking at, it also says where approval can be granted without substantial detriment to the public interest and without substantially detracting from or nullifying the provisions and purpose of the ordinance. So the purpose of the ordinance is not to make things more non-conforming, it's to assure that we have lots that have buildable area that allow for the home, the well, and the septic. So making a lot more non-conforming does not, nullifies the purpose of the ordinance.
Here's my additional note, so, one was just a planned correction on the, on your notes, on the plan notes, it indicated NHDS minimum lot size says minus very well radius area, so it was just some verbiage got transposed in that area. The zoning summary, we should add verbiage about vernal pools, article three, B three, that no disturb buffer around wetlands at twenty-five feet. Zoning summary, you may need to add verbiage, or E, the stream protection overlay district, article three, E, if the stream is first order or greater. I recommend that to show proposed curb cut, where you're planning on dropping a driveway for the smaller lot, confirm what the total buildable area is, because it was not listed, and the plans, we need a wetland scientist stamp. I know you provided us with a letter today, which referenced a wetland flag, we would need to see the wetland scientist stamp on the plans to make sure that that flag that they reference is the same flag that marks the vernal pool.
Do we need to make...
I don't think so. The driveway ends up, driveway permit ends up coming from the building inspector, or road agent. So for something like this, we generally don't require a site distance unless there's a specific concern.
Pete, I wanna see this get done, sir, we're not trying to be, trust me, I'm not gonna pass a question, though, just, well, I'm gonna ask the question, doesn't matter. Why don't we, or you try to take that two-acre lot and do whatever you gotta do to find the thirty thousand envelope, then cut your lot line...
Along that.
Along to the fact that whatever the lot comes out to, that makes a thirty thousand envelope.
I know how to do it.
And I know you do, Pete, I've been seeing you for a thousand years.
I got it, I got it.
No, we could do it, thank you, that's... But that's what I'm just saying, though, so this way, you could still maximize, it might not look as clean as a straight line.
It's not gonna look this clean.
I understand, but hey, you know what, look around town, there's a lot of non-straight lines around.
That's what you're gonna get.
That's fine, you know, there's a compromise here, to try to give you the most land and still have a building envelope, that you need to make a lot out of.
Back to the drawing board.
And again, I mean, because again, I don't think anybody here doesn't wanna see this not happen, we just wanna see it happen so that it's done away with, do the right ordinances.
The thing is, if you make something more non-conforming, then anybody who gets that more non-conforming lot, wants to do anything with it, is, has their hand pretty well tied from doing anything with it, without going in for waivers and exemptions.
Yeah, that's, right, you're a hundred percent correct.
Isn't this piece of pizza pie in the middle, A, isn't there a fairly large wetland in there anyway?
Yes, there is.
That bisects that?
Yes, there is.
So is there, I don't know if there's any, if it bisects that, if bringing this lot line, the new adjusted lot line over to that wetland to keep all that contiguous area on one side is favorable or not, I didn't wanna make a lot as big as possible, but...
The building lot doesn't have to be two-hundred-by-two-hundred, it just has to be thirty thousand square feet continuous, all right, so that's part of the leeway of how we're getting around, because we know things aren't gonna be perfect squares.
Right.
So, you know, continuous, if you have to make a line that goes thirty feet by a hundred this way, in order, I mean, again, it's...
Yeah, there's minimum, there's minimum widths that are...
Right, again, but you know, I'm just using this for an example, for the do people on here, the board, to understand, we're trying to, we're trying to work with the applicant in order to...
What we're gonna do is, we're gonna come back, we're gonna take the existing contiguous, which is not thirty thousand, but it's a number that's less than thirty thousand, and we're gonna draw some lot lines around it, we're gonna come back. Is that what you want? That's what the zoning says? That's what we'll do, and then we'll see what it looks like. It'll have more frontage, it'll just be this triangle, just flipped, to grab the extra, if that's what Mr. Wood wants to do, that's what we'll do. It'll probably be around two and a half, maybe three acres, it's gonna be a little bit bigger, but that's what it'll be. Same concept, just different idea, maybe I misinterpreted that section of the zoning, it seemed like it was sort of a, probably it was too good to be true, so. Just, it seemed like, it seemed logical, but like, you know, certainly, two sides to every argument. Do you wanna continue with your meeting, Ed, or do you have...
Public, so, there is, yeah, I'll open the public hearing, there was a waiver requested, which...
Yeah.
I don't know if what we've discussed tonight makes you wanna have still act on this, hold off on it, or withdraw it.
Well, what I'd like to do is revise what I have, the waiver will still apply, because I still don't wanna have to do David's existing lot with topography and all of that, and, you know, so it will, it'll, the next application will have more wetlands and put the brook on there and stuff like that for you, but I'll still be wanting that waiver, whether you wanna do it tonight, or another, you know, next time when we come back, it's up to you.
Is there any question, so, obviously, different maps show that, they show it as some kind of stream, it says it on the tax, on the, I think, on the assessing card, and then, depending what map you look at, show it, do we, I haven't been out there, so I don't know what that stream is, is it, is it a perennial stream, is it...
I'm not sure, I'll look at the USGS, it might be intermittent, it might be perennial, I'm not sure.
Confirm that for us, that'd be great, too.
Well, you'd look at the US, see what they identify it as.
Called the Isinglass Brook.
Isinglass Brook, yeah. All right, so I'll go, this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the public hearing portion of this, it's nine oh two, so I'm gonna ask anybody, if there's anybody here, I'd like to, have anybody that would like to speak for the application come forward first, anybody that has spoken against, or just has general questions about the application, come up after. Any for or against, or ask questions, come on up.
They're tripping over each other.
We actually have people here, so I wanna make sure, give them a second. Close the public hearing, it's nine oh four. Okay, so that brings us back to the board, is there any further discussion from the board, any other, I offered some additional, just minor corrections to items, some additional verbiage to add on to the plan set, everything else we discussed, is there anybody else that, any question?
Waiver, I mean, do you wanna take action on it? It doesn't seem...
It sounds like parts of it we would need to, we need to...
It just talks about the lots.
We'd have to wait for...
Size or anything.
I think it makes sense to wait on it.
To revise it, if I understood correctly.
Didn't hear you.
Oh, regarding the waiver, if I understood correctly.
Did you say wait on it, or it doesn't matter?
I believe we were waiting on it, and what are you talking about?
Why don't you wait till you see the plan that...
That's what I...
In final plan.
Yes. To move to, what would be a reasonable date?
We can do the, our next meeting's June twenty-sixth, any new deliverables would have to be by June nineteenth, is that sufficient for you, insufficient?
So, July tenth?
July tenth would be our...
July tenth would be okay?
Did I hear you mention you needed the wetland scientist, that we made the wetlands?
If there's wetlands shown, we need the wetland scientist stamp on the plans, so you gave us a letter that was signed by a wetland scientist, but with anything we record, or, that's one of our requirements on plans, is that wetlands be stamped by a certified wetland scientist. So your final approval for us will have to have a stamp on the plans.
The final approval. Mr. Landry, July tenth?
July tenth?
Does that work for you?
Well, it'll...
Or do you want...
This weekend?
Or July twenty-fourth, I mean.
The one caveat with the July tenth, any deliverables would have to be a bit earlier because of the holiday week in front of it, so usually, you do one week ahead, which would be July third, but because of that holiday week, it would be...
It's no holidays, it's just July third.
The Wednesday before it.
You need it on July third?
We would have to have it by...
Or before?
The Wednesday, we could have it Friday.
For the tenth?
So what's that, sorry, I'm gonna take my phone, because I don't have a calendar, that June date.
The twenty-eighth.
Thank you.
Does that work for you, June twenty-eighth, to have deliverables to Alana?
That's a Friday, so they would have to be in...
For July tenth, because of the holiday, we've gotta give her time to...
You need it on the twenty-eighth?
Of June.
Of June.
That long?
Because of the holiday, to give Alana time to make copies, because she's only in the office two days a week, and aren't you going on vacation? Okay.
Well, we'll try it, I don't know, I gotta talk to the wetland scientist guy, so, I can't, I'll say, we'll do the best we can, if we don't get it on the twenty-eighth, then we'll have to postpone the meeting, I guess.
I always try to err on the side of going earlier.
That's what I'd like to do.
If the conditional, you know, if the continuation is requested, that's fine, but I'd rather have you on the earlier one.
So, I move that we continue case twenty-four dash zero zero eight, LLA Witham, to July tenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven PM.
With deliverables.
With deliverables by June twenty-eighth.
Second. The motion by Mrs. Bascom, second by Mr. Evans, all those, any further discussions? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries, seven zero. All right. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
The next item on the agenda is discussion of planning board fees, I apologize, I failed on making sure that discussion was distributed to everybody, I did print copies of what SRPC kinda, how they potentially took our current land use fees, amended it a little bit to try to accomplish what we had discussed, I'm gonna just hand out this, and Alana will give you a copy as well.
You got one here for Alana?
Sorry. And these are mostly based on the previous discussions?
Exactly, yeah, so this is a continuation of our discussions on these, so, we talked about how would we potentially change our fee schedule, so this is one way to do it, it's basically taking our current fee schedule, adding a space, making it two pages instead, but moving the, after what used to be the site plan commercial, it would be then adding the planning consulting services deposit with details as to how that...
Your SCR account.
Of how that works, yeah, and it's a lower dollar amount, we can change that, but we went below, because this is the consultant deposit, it's different than the, you know, third-party engineering reviews and stuff like that, which we would require to be paid as well at a time.
Didn't we have that spelled out, the third-party engineering, or did we say that we were not gonna put a number in there?
No, we have that as the TBD, because it's gonna depend on the project.
Okay. Okay, okay.
I think, I think this is the cleanest method, it does call out specifically the, how the planners' hours are budgeted, so it's by the quarter hour increment, which I think is very fair, instead of half hour or hour increments, the rate of that, which kinda goes back to our SRPC contract, and then, I think, has a basically a five-dollar add-on for admin... Uh, the rate of that, which kinda goes back to our SRPC contract, and then I think has a, basically a five-dollar add-on for admin costs within the town.
So this, did you go?
Changes was the, under site plan residential, there was an asterisk after unit, um, which is that not to exceed five thousand dollars. It's saying, they, they changed a, a one instead of an asterisk one, just to make that clear.
Did you go to the BOS with this yet, or no?
I've provided the town administrator, and, uh, as well as, uh, the town administrator has received the updated potential contract language with SRPC, which I don't know when that gets signed, or if it's been signed yet, because it's a July first.
The fees associated with L-chip and recording, do they, those change often? Because that ought to be just whatever is required by them.
Yeah, I was actually gonna suggest, if we don't do that anymore, the applicant does it themselves, so do they need to be on there?
The town doesn't record plans?
No, the applicant, I don't, I don't take it there, to the registry. Um, they do it themselves.
What if the applicant changed it while driving over there?
Are you suggesting that that whole section, well, except for the total, disappear? The registry section?
Yeah.
Or, or just take out the cost and just put verbiage in there specifying that the, um, to be filed and paid for by applicant directly to.
Why, why did that get changed? Do we know?
Uh, I think they just didn't want my time to be driving there and doing it when I have other things to do. When I first started, I was doing it a lot times, but then I, I did it a few times, but then, um, the, I, the board agreed that I shouldn't do that.
My concern was we had to go back, we would have to go back to change to the select board and all that kinda stuff, to change something that's not in our control. Or to see that disappear.
Yeah.
Whether we do it or not.
And I think the other part was too, sometimes the plans would get, the miler would get rejected.
Right.
And then we were driving it back, having to get the applicant, have them do it, and they're usually, uh, and plus with our limited schedules with the land use office, it was, uh, oftentimes the applicant wanted to get as soon as possible and get it right to the registry so they could move forward with whatever their, uh, whatever their plans were. So I think we, I agree, if, uh, we should spell that out, that, that, uh, somewhere. Just say other fees that will apply. If you collect at a time of approval, it would be, um, L-chip and recording fees paid directly by the applicant to the registry of deeds when they, when applicant, uh, records.
Can I just mention one more thing? I've never collected an administrative remapping fee at the end of the, the case. So, I don't know if you wanna keep that, or if that's something that can just be added to the original fee.
That's the assessing.
Kinda weird just saying, oh, here, pay it seventy-five, yeah, I don't know.
I think it makes sense to include it at the beginning, then it's cleaned done.
It's refunded if the project is denied, or something like that? If it's, because it's not gonna, it's not gonna be remapped.
That's true.
So, collecting enough fund is fine, you can tell them though, it will be returned if you, if your project is denied or withdrawn, or something like that.
Okay.
Or you could just say not approved. You can find language with him.
Alright, so we, we moved that piece up into the, uh, fee collected time of application section. And then, um, I think I don't even know. The only reason I was trying to keep some kind of verbiage about the L-chip and recording fees i- is to make sure that it, it's called out and, and as to whose responsibility that is. It's not the town that's ever gonna foot that bill, so I wanna make sure we keep it on the fee schedule. I just wanna make sure we don't need a dollar amount, but, um, I think we should just state on there that L-chip and recording fees paid directly to Rockham County, Rockham County Registry of Deeds.
By applicant.
By applicant. My plan is filed.
If that makes sense.
Alright, and then on, on the backside, it's still just the, the impact fee schedule, that hasn't changed, I was just moved, um, I just moved.
Is there a way to get that on the front side?
Maybe, if we shrink the font, by move. So I, I, I think, well, we can try. So again, I think tonight is on, if the, if this board, it's up to the board. We're, we're holding the public hearing on it, um, I believe that satisfies our RSA requirement. If this board so chooses to recommend adoption of updated fees, we would then submit this to the select board for their, uh, discussion and potential approval at one of their meetings. We're not gonna live until that is the case, until it's approved by the select board and then posted online.
Well, we got one of them here, so, um, I'll make a motion to, um.
We get two of us?
So, I have a question.
Come on, come on up. This, this, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing, so come on up, please.
Alright, John Decker. Alright, is there any change proposed to the building permit fees? And how does that apply, play in with these?
Not from this board. So building permits, that's, and those costs are handled by the select board and.
Okay, so those are all ours. Okay.
So, so all's we're, all's we're proposing right now is the things that are under our purview within the, uh, planning board. So land use fees, um, for new subdivisions, new site plans.
Alright, yeah, cause I, I have questions really specific about those, but if we need to address that at one of our meetings, John, I'm looking at you.
I understand you are.
Well, the camera can't see my eyes.
So I'll just, yeah, I'll just reiterate it, so, or summarize. We, we've talked about this for a little while, especially with, um, we started talking about it a bit last year, and then obviously with some of the budget items that have occurred, we, we, and our budget being cut a bit. We were looking at ways to stretch the money, and then we tried to see what other towns are doing. And multiple towns in our region and beyond have already implemented something very similar. So it's basically taking that cost of the planner costs and shifting it back to the applicant. Uh, and we're trying to do it within reason. Some towns require like a five thousand dollar escrow upfront for major subdivisions. We're, we're only asking five hundred.
Why, thanks?
And then to be replenished. We're not trying to make it, add such fees at the beginning that it precludes people from coming in before us.
No, no, and I appreciate that. That's, that makes sense. We wanna make sure that it pays for itself.
But again, yes, trying to, obviously it's never gonna pay for all the services that we receive, um, from our contract planning services. But if we can, uh, shed twenty, thirty, forty, fifty percent of that and utilize the, the fees that, uh, the budget that we do have for those services to the higher level items. I think that's gonna be a big benefit to the town.
And it's on the website, the current fee notices.
Cause it's a two, two-pronged thing. One was us discussing it here, and also working with SRBC, uh, to add some additional language to our contract with them, which is coming up for July first renewal. Again, I don't know if it's been signed or not, but I know that's been amended potentially to.
Allow for this, how it'll be accounted for, and then, um,
you know, potentially expand the scope of what they can do for us, and, you know, within our contract already. The potential additional cost to the town really is the escrow, is handling the escrow. So that five hundred dollars, if we have to put that in an escrow account. But that's why we bump up the, uh, the rate a little bit to, for admin costs.
Right, yeah, no, I, um, makes sense to review them. I'll have to take a deeper look at what they were and stuff like that, but.
Cause again, when it comes in front of us.
Right, when it comes in front of us.
Recommend to us.
Right, exactly.
We can still say.
Yeah, I know. That's why, that's what I mean. I have, I'll have to do my homework for our piece.
Right. We say, hey, that two hundred should be two fifty. I mean, again, it's not normally what our, we would do. We, we're gonna always take the side of what the board says here. You know, we're not gonna go and start ripping apart what we've done, but just to say that that's part of our discussion.
And we didn't, um, so at, at this juncture, although we can, we haven't, we're not proposing any changes in any of the other fees. Uh, we already adjusted those last year, um, for the application fees. It was just adding this piece in to put that contract planner cost back to the applicant.
Did we put in the fee for mailing? Or did we decide to have everybody pick up? Because I don't know that it's, not everybody comes to pick up their packets, do they?
I didn't say. I thought you were here till three. I get here at two fifty-five, so.
And, and for, for some people who work and work a good half hour or more from the town offices, it's very difficult for them to get in to get the packets. So I think they should, we should go back to have them being mailed, and I think it should be on the applicant to pay, to pay those costs.
Or the applicant can deliver them.
It's all over town. I don't think they're gonna do that.
No. No. You're no fun, Steve. You're no fun.
The boys from USA Springs, no.
I'll concur with Ms. Bascom, and, you know, I agree that it is an extra burden to have to come to the town hall to pick up, uh, materials, especially, you know, when many of us work. Um, and if there is some way to return to getting those mailed to us, so that we can actually have adequate time to review uh, cases that come before the board, I think that's a great idea. Um, I thought it wouldn't be as challenging as it was to make time to get over here. But given the town office hours and my availability, I have shown up here when the town office is closed and, you know, just not checked ahead of time. So that's on me, but still, it is, is a challenge to give the information that I need before the, you know, actual meeting.
And I know saying it's all online seems to work for a lot of people.
No, it's, it's hard to read those things.
I'm a computer guy, but I still like my plans on eleven by seventeens, like it, you know.
If they're mailed to you, they need to be ready at a certain date or whatever to be mailed for the meeting. Are they being, is that timeline being shortened because you're picking them up, or are they?
Well, it would be short, yeah. So we, we obviously, we always have a deliverables date. So it's up to us to make sure that whatever we said as a deliverables date is, would then make it sufficient for us to be there to get the plans either online or, uh, and review, be interviewing them, or get them in the mail timely enough to review.
Right, well, right, and that's what I was getting at, was is there enough time allowed for you to pick them up? To, to like a week, I don't know what you need for people to get over here, or if it's just impossible.
I, because of my work schedule, nine, five, and, you know, leaving eight, leaving six, if I wasn't, you know, pretty real key.
Yeah, you have a key.
I would not be able to make it near ever.
Right.
To get my plans. Cause I just, it'd always be closed.
Right. For new, for new cases, it's not, it's not as hard, because our application deadline is generally three weeks or so ahead of a meeting date. I think where we run into concerns is when we're continuing cases, and we're generally trying to, trying to work within the RSA and also, uh, honor the applicant's time as well. So we usually try to go to the closest sc- meeting that we can get to, um, you know, with deliverables one week prior. So sometimes that's, I mean, it's one week from today, and the meeting is two weeks. So, it really depends, and again, I think it really goes back to the board, having to make sure that we are clear as to what these deliverables are when we're setting those timelines. So if it's, if we give them a week, that should be for pretty minor changes, but if it's a major, pretty, a major subdivision, I think we need to be better about making that deliverable date, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yes, the applicant should be responsible for that fee. I agree completely.
Can you, can you just add a hundred dollars to the planning consulting services fees, instead of five hundred and six hundred, and that'll cover our mailing costs?
I think the way we call it the language, we would have to, we'd have to put like an admin fee somewhere, and, and I don't know that we run into any issues with that. I thought I went to counsel for this as well, and, and now I've got so many things out there, I can't remember for certain. Um, as to how, how towns handle that. So, again, the reasoning for that fee is that anything that gets all these documents into our hands to be able to be reviewed means the service that we're gonna give the applicant is better. The service that we're gonna give the town is better, and the board is better, because if we're having them online in our hands, and every, as multiple ways as possible, that means we've had more chances to really take a look at those and, um, do our due diligence before they, we're sitting, before an applicant is sitting before us. So I think that would be one fee potentially we add in, um. But what do we do when, you know, you have continuances and, and the mailing cost is, uh, is gone? So do we just add a, a simple admin fee?
And again, I think part of the idea of this was, you know, keeping it simple. If there's an extra fee that comes in because something gets on and the town has to eat that fee, that's gonna be okay. But to get something out of them instead of nothing out of them is really where I was basing my conversation. That says, you know, ten, seventy dollars, you know, right here. You know, if that's twice that we get a hundred and forty, and if the third one goes out and the town has to eat the seventy, hey, but we got a hundred and forty out of the two hundred and ten. That's way better than losing two hundred and ten. You know, and but we're keeping it a simple fee where, you know, on a basis. The calculations of trying to do it in the mathematics and to send it over to for, uh, you know, what you would call it, to get the lot, it's, it's so much more work to come, the, the small amount that we're looking for.
But I think it depends on the case as far as what the fees are. You take something like this, mailing this out three times, it's gonna cost more than ten dollars. You take a case like we just had, that's the thought on Hall's Way, that's way less. So I think the fee schedule for mailing needs to be related to whether or not it's a lot line adjustment and a simple subdivision versus your major subdivisions or your open space subdivisions where you have five, six, seven months of, of plans going out. Because then we're not getting hardly any of the money from the applicant on back.
Five renditions to it already.
That's what I'm saying. And if you, so if you're only getting two of those paid for, and not even, because these cost more than ten dollars to mail.
Thirty-five trips back and forth for all of us members, think of the gas and the environment that we're gonna save. This is not coming out of the town's budget. This is, the planning board is bringing this money in to cover this, and I don't even know why there should even be a question about it, honestly.
There's no question about charging them. The question is how we charge them.
Can't we just bill them?
Well, I was just trying, I was just trying to see about, I was reading the RSA, quickly, six seventy-three, sixteen, is staff and finances. So number two, any fee with which a local land use board acting pursuant to this title collects from an applicant to cover an expense lawfully imposed upon the applicant, including but not limited to, to the expenses of notice, the expense of consulting services, or implement, so. I, I think that means, you know, we can, as long as we can justify it, we can lawfully cause, you know, add the fee. So do we just call it? So I think in the past, we used to think that the application fee itself kinda covered some of these items. You know, it was for the, the land use clerk's time of taking the application in, looking through it, calculating a fee, processing the materials, getting them out to the board and to the, to the planner. What we realized is the amounts we had before probably were insufficient to even cover any of that, so.
Very insufficient.
How, how about copying fees? Like, yo, Alana's got a copy like eight thousand, is that in there?
No, the applicants are, uh, have to provide us like a certain of our plans. Thankfully, hopefully, the copying amount that Alana has to do for us.
So you don't want to give the copies of the applications?
Yeah.
I would actually have to look into that, because I do think that's something needed to be added, it's not right there. Cause I do, I will copy applications.
So I think, I think adding in a, uh, just an admini- administration fee of two hundred dollars, again, that should get us multiple rounds of mailings, potentially, uh, cover the cost to do that. It's, it's, does not seem.
Why not call it a deposit or an escrow?
Well, I don't wanna call it that, cause.
I wanna go back to them if they, if they, if we're, we missed half of it.
Yeah, it's, uh, I think if you call it escrow, then it, then escrow to an escrow account would be hit separately, so I think we just call it.
Administrative deposit.
Fee, uh.
Three hundred dollars, and we'll give you money back if we don't use it.
And then say what it's used for that way, um. That way, that way.
Administration fee and IE examples for what this fee is entitled, and then that leaves us at our own discretion of, I mean, obviously, we're not trying to do this in a malicious manner to any of our, you know.
No, the only reason I was gonna call it is.
But we're just saying, hey, this. But we're just saying, hey, this could be for mailing. This could be for outside service for something that you require, you know, Alana to do. The work, you know, I mean, just...
Yeah.
Let me ask you this, Alana. Do you have a ballpark figure at all as to what the mailing's cost last year? Because we've only not been... We've been picking them up for the past... Well, since March or April anyway, right? Prior to that, you were mailing them. Do you have a ballpark?
Um, no.
You'd have to see best...
They separated that out, like, on the budget, maybe they did.
Well, I'm sure they did on the budget because they threw a gasket when they found out what they were spending on it.
I mean, I do... When I do postage, I do pick either zoning or planning.
Here's my recommendation.
Go to your number at the end of the year of what it actually is.
I say we list it as strictly administrative fee of, you know, $200 or $300. I don't wanna go higher than that, knowing that a lot of our applications are minor and others are larger. But I think a $200 fee would cover that. The only reason I was potentially saying we would... We should call out what that fee is for is so that... And this isn't being petty or snide to the select board. It's... Or the budget committee. It's that...
You don't wanna take...
I don't wanna take it away. So I wanna make it clear that this administrative fee is for the mailings and things like that. So that it can't come down and say, well, you don't have it in your budget because we're charging it to the applicant at the time of...
Why can't we just call it mailing fee then? Why? Is it... What is wrong with that? I personally, as a taxpayer, do not feel I should have to pay for all of these packets to be mailed out to all of us when this has nothing... It doesn't give me anything. I would much rather see my tax money go towards paying Alana keeping the lights on or, you know, for the... Taking care of the fire department. Not mailing out packets every single month for somebody else's bill so that they can get rich. Sorry.
Administrative slash mailing fee.
That's fine.
Got it.
And I... But I do think... And I do think still add that it should be a fee that is dependent upon what is coming before the board. A minor subdivision or lot line adjustment versus your major ones or your... You take a site plan. You really think $200 is gonna cover much on site plan? Applications coming out to us with all those plans? It's not. It'll get eaten up way before we make any decision on the site plan.
Sure.
I'm sorry. I just... We've been talking about this for a while and I'm getting more and more upset that nothing is happening to resolve it.
But again, realistically speaking, the mailing charge needs to be taken somehow or another off of the planning board.
Right.
So that it doesn't show up in the budget.
Right.
I mean, that's...
Right.
That's the deal.
That's the reason we're having the company.
Or back to the applicant.
Exactly.
Directly from the applicant to pay for it.
You can't do that because the... Everything gets mashed together. All different kinds of items go together. Not... You don't mail out individual applications. So it can't be a charge back. It can't be, you know, project specific.
Yeah, because the plans that we get, like you said, tonight, would've had this in it and would've had the other one.
Yes.
So that's why you have to...
So...
It has to just be lumped in with everything else.
And that's why I think, again...
Just raise your fee and just know that it's taking out... It's gonna cut it. Call it admin mailing fee.
Separate them separately.
If the applicant is providing copies for each one of us, why don't they just mail them to each one of us?
Can we depend on to mail it on time?
No.
No.
You'd have it three days ahead of time.
We get stuff at the meeting here five minutes before the meeting.
Right, right.
Which is not supposed to happen.
Well...
But what's the difference? If they have to mail it to us and it doesn't get here, then...
No, it has to come through the town.
After what?
It has to come through the town because, I mean, typically, everything should be stamped in, right? Like, you should... You know, you're supposed to be having things notified, like this, the town has received it, you know. And then we have... We take ownership of it to someone.
Yep, you're right.
So I think we're all in agreement. It's just how to...
Don't bitch at us from the budget committee.
That's not my... That's not my responsibility.
It is a...
Raise the administrative fee.
So the way I'm hearing it, I think we're all in agreement that a fee should be added. So under the fee collected at time of application, we'll be adding either one line or two or adding another asterisk administration slash mailing fee in either...
Let's do the...
Say $100 for minor subdivisions and lot line adjustments. And $200 or $300? $300?
For majors.
Higher.
At least for $300 for major subdivisions.
$300 for...
Per plan submission.
For major subdivisions and site plans.
Well...
Per plan submission. Every time they gave us one of these plans, there should have been another charge.
I like that idea.
I think we would have to...
I don't know the amount.
Especially, I mean, postage is going up again this year. It's going up again shortly.
And it's getting slower.
I think we would end up...
Can we use Amazon?
I think we would end up with needing another area. Because right now, we have fee collected at time of application, fee collected at time of acceptance, fee collected at time of approval and then certificate occupancy, which is the impact fees. So I think it... Again, I don't wanna make it so convoluted or difficult. I was just trying to make it, I think, clean to make sure that the town isn't eating these costs. And I think if we kind of get there with a lower fee for minor plans and lot line adjustments and a higher fee for site plans and major subdivisions, I don't know.
And you know, we can always just try it out for the first year and see how... And then look at our numbers, see where it comes and then make additions to it the year after to say, hey, this.
Yep.
Because the... My thought was, any of this was, we need to get something.
Right.
We ain't getting nothing.
Okay.
So I'll take 300 right now and then, hey, see if it works out next year after we look at the numbers saying we this much came in for this right here. And, you know, it actually kinda broke even across, then, okay. Or no, it was a little lopsided. We need to make an adjustment. You know, we didn't lose any money. Well, we didn't, you know... At least we got something for this year and we'll just fine tune it to where we need to go for the year after.
Can we put the extra towards a frozen margarita machine?
So we'll call it a...
Wouldn't it be a good idea to ask Alana to record these costs per applicant? Here's how much that we had to mail out for applicant B. And we only had to spend this much for applicant C. And at the end of the year, we can see what that comes to be.
Yeah, but for now, I think, yeah.
Gather data.
Yes.
Exactly.
Yeah, so then if we gather data, we put nothing on this for the board and we're just going with what's here.
No, so for now, for now, we add a fee. It's getting lumped in with everything else. You can't actually calculate that per application.
But she could bail them out separately.
Well, why? No, I get... I get what you're saying. You could post them, you could weigh it. No, you could weigh it and get the cost, figure out the cost. The amount of work it would take would negate any savings that you're gonna get by charging it.
All right, well, then what about having each packet weighed to see what it is and then you figure out the cost that way?
Yeah.
So you know what you're spending on each packet, essentially.
It's not... It's not how it works. It's like a base fee and then they add it per bulk and... Per bulk and weight.
But that's for the whole town?
So it depends on the packaging you use too.
Select by department.
So for now...
Where do you count it for?
For now, here's what I say. Here's my thought and the board can make the motion on it or not. That it sounds like we're all in agreement or there's a general consensus on that we're gonna change the fee collected at time of application by adding the planning consulting services deposit of $500, which has verbiage explaining what that's for, how it's billed, and that has to be replenished. Add a administrative fee, administrative slash mailing fee, which is separate from the public notice to a butter. That's a separate fee at the bottom. And either just do one fee or break it down to two. So minor subdivisions and lot line adjustments, you know, would be a lower amount because we know that that's less paperwork. Major subdivisions and site plans would be a higher dollar amount.
Well, that guy's lot line adjustment today was a pretty hefty piece of paper.
Yeah.
But you know, I still think that it's less and I... Even though we can't really... I get your point, Blair, that we can't figure out what they all are. But I think if we still have each person, each group putting in money to cover it, it ends up covering it more than what we've got now.
Yeah. I agree. I think just adding it into your overall submission, the application fee is the way to go. And you could... And you could base it on whether, you know, the type of submission is. A lot line adjustment, you know, is probably gonna be, you know, $50. Whereas a major subdivision, you know, should be $150, something like that. But I think to do it on a per application, like per weight, per size type of thing. No, we wanna keep it clean. It's gonna take her so much time to do, to track that. But yes, I agree. I think you do need to cover the cost. And I just... If you do it like a bulk, you make up for it on one and then you lose a little on another.
Right, well, that's what I was thinking. But I still like your... You said 200 and 300 or...
100 and 300.
100 and 300?
Which I think is out of this.
Is that what you were saying?
Sounds reasonable to me.
Can I just add on where it says project type subdivision fee? Where it says 200 plus 200 per lot? Change it to 300 plus 200 per lot? Just add on that extra 100 and 300?
I think the reason we're putting it as a separate line is to make sure that it can be... It gets done and it can't get cut out of the budget because we're showing that we're charging for it separately. So we are paying for that cost of the mailings. Whereas that was kind of...
And it's easier too to explain if, when you see it, when the applicant comes in and they say, what is this fee for? And say, hey, listen, it's for all these packets are gonna go out, for the whole thing that's gonna go out. And you're paying for it because...
So you're saying like the...
I'm solely...
Your budget for postage because you don't have it separated out? You just have...
No, no, we didn't cut the budget for both. We just said you can't mail it out anymore because it's too expensive. If you wanna mail it out, you make the applicant pay for it. And that's why we're having the discussion right now.
Yeah.
The select board said no more mailing out.
And we thought we were charging that based on our... We thought that was kinda one of the fees that was basically built into our application fees, but...
But it wasn't.
So clearly, there's, you know... It was just one of the things that was never really discussed or vetted. So that's my only reason for potentially adding it as a separate line.
Puts it behind the fence, it's protected.
For a little while. All right, I move that we adopt the land use board fees that has been proposed with the addition of a $500 consultant fee.
Can I just ask a quick question? I know part of the board, but I do have a question about how this is gonna work with SRPC. So are you going to submit to me your hours for each project when it's completed?
They're gonna submit like an invoice, basically. It's project specific.
How does that feel?
No, it's an administrative pain in the butt on our end, but Jen has a process. Because we do it currently for Wakefield, for example. So she already does it.
I want to want our invoice from you guys.
Yeah, I don't know... I don't know that administrative thing, but we did cover it when Ed and I talked to her. And it's more on me, but yes.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you guys wanted me to calculate it or...
No, no. It's something that I have to do. She'll have to walk me through it. No, and that's why we do add a little bit of extra cost, like a bump up to the rate to have that a little bit of admin cost because we know there's escrow.
I know, me too.
All right, so sorry, Mrs. Bascom, you were...
Okay, by adding the $500 consultant fee. You stated that, right? And then adding an admin fee mailing fee line with a lot line adjustment, small subdivisions being $100 and major subdivisions and site plans being $300.
I'll second that motion.
In removing LCHIP in that?
And yes. And modify the fees collected at time of approval under LCHIP, put applicant responsibility.
I will resecond that.
Thank you.
All right, so that was a motion by Mrs. Bascom All right, so that was a motion by Mrs. Bascom and a second by Mr. Stevens, uh, to, uh, approve the amended land use fees. Any further discussion from the board? All as a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Re-aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. So, uh, Alana, I'll see if we can get this tweaked to fit and then make sure that we can get it from, to the select board town administrator for, uh, for their consideration when they see fit.
Yes, we have a meeting Monday.
Yeah.
So, chances are it's not going to be at that meeting.
So who, who does it?
I'm gonna, I've already got this as a Word document, so, so Jen from SRPC had already kind of at, done this tweak for me, uh, for us, so I can see.
And if you can get this to us on Monday, like to Allen on Monday, we'll.
Try to get it before the end of this week.
I don't know if we have to.
Friday.
Public, no. This is the public discretion of the fees anyway, so it doesn't matter.
Well, I'll try to get it off our plate into the select board as soon as possible.
And they, and so that brief about the SRPC, like if that's going up, is that going to have to change later or are you going to have an idea?
I think it's included on here because, uh, our contract comes up July first. I think that was included on this, um, proposals, um, proposal number. All right, thank you everybody, that, um, thank you, Mr. Decker, for providing input tonight. Uh, public comment, it's a good time for anybody to come before us that, uh, that's not plan or project specific to ask us questions.
I already did.
Yeah, so we'll move on, but we try to reserve that time of night for, for, uh, for that piece for the town, for the public. Uh, we have one set of minutes for May twenty second. I propose we table those unless.
I'm good with that because I haven't read them yet.
Yeah. Select board, staff board member updates, start Mr. Severance.
I was going to talk about what Jen brought up at the select board meeting and, but that's been taken care of. Besides that, nothing else.
What do you mean? Uh, maybe I'm not.
Don't, don't get into it, it's.
People were concerned about the permit.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, okay, sorry.
I thought it was a good question. I researched it a little bit and I found out that it was a mess, that's all.
Thing to find out, not much else.
I, I, I initially assumed it was select board, but.
I have another problem with that, but that's.
That's okay, whatever.
I, I'd thrown out, um, an idea, uh, where I think we're talking about updating the master plan and the zoning ordinances and, um, there's some state money out there, um, under a HOP grant and, um, so, um, and they're having a new round of this money, uh, up to twenty-five thousand dollars to, um, update your town plans and all that stuff, so. Did, did you have a chance to look at, um, you said that?
I don't think they've put out, like, the requirements of the grant application, but in the past, it's only been for, uh, land use and, and, and housing, uh, sections of the master plan, it's not the whole master plan.
Okay.
That section, that, yeah, I read the.
For that HOP grant.
I read the process and I read the, you know, so obviously, it's like communities that have already participated and been granted, they get first preference than anybody else that applies, gets kind of, um, considered if there's funds still, but I'm a little bit nervous, I don't want to tie our hands, you know, with, with, with it if it doesn't fit the community, so some of it, I, I just recommend everybody to read it, you know, there's part of it where if it.
Provides community outreach?
Great, and, and that part, I think is great to help us and update the master plan. But if it's, if it by nature has its own specific goal to, to, to do within a town, which may be contrary to what the town wants to do in the, um, presidents, I don't want to have us go for a grant that, if it comes with any kind of like, you know, handcuffs, basically.
I haven't seen any, but there is a requirement that you have to do outreach that.
The outreach, I love.
There, there is, yeah.
As far as goals, I don't, I don't, haven't seen any, but I haven't seen a plan submitted or rejected, I don't think there would be, but.
There, there is a, an outreach process in the, um, in this where they, you know, send out surveys to the town to pick up different ideas about, you know, what people might want to see differently, you know? I mean, to me, I don't, it's just a dumb idea, but you know, either, you know, the town stops spending money or we increase the tax base and not by reassessing everybody that's here already because that's just going to raise the taxes inadvertently anyway. So, um, increasing whether it's commercial or residential or whatever it is, um, to get more tax base to grow our taxes so that our taxes don't go up for us individually is, is an important goal.
But since I moved to the town, I think our tax base residentially is increased by over ten percent. I think there was two, less than two thousand households in the town, um, when I moved in fifteen years ago and, and now there's more, but I'd say our tax, taxes have increased well above that rate, so I think residential does not, unless it's, there's very specific type residential, there's a breaking point. Um, I think it's a, it's a slippery slope where residential is looked at for decreasing tax rate, it usually increases it, in my opinion, anyway, this is solely my opinion because of increased demand for services and, and everything else in, uh, in school, whereas commercial, which we are trying to get focused on by removing residential from the report or, or, um, generally has a lesser demand and can potentially help offset, uh, our tax rate, but again, those are just my opinions.
Well, higher density for elderly housing that doesn't provide kids to schools is not going to increase the school budget. It'll lower the budget by, you know, adding tax dollars.
Let's just, you know.
It's theory.
Ten o'clock.
Yeah, sorry.
Can we land this plane? You know, I, we, I paid a big price to be here today. I missed the whole Tom Brady thing.
In game three.
Right, game three. I can record that.
I know.
I'm recording that, but I, I had to totally blow off the whole Tom Brady thing.
Okay, let's keep going.
I don't know why it wasn't up there.
Go ahead.
Love it.
Uh, so here's a real quick reader's digest, the town right now versus the, excuse me, the Viltics versus Town Nottingham is going on court. It should be finishing up tomorrow. Uh, the grader's been fixed on the, uh, the blade of the grader's been fixed and we are now grading all the roads around the lake, uh, Tuckaway Lake, for instance, and do other roads. So that's a good thing because it was out of commission for a while. The Frisbee Golf is, I think that's what they call it, over in Marston's. This is off, sure, whatever, is, uh, all the fine, uh, all the things that you throw into, yeah, those, right there, it's a gamish rates here. They've been all purchased, uh, through donations and everything like this, so when it's getting installed, I don't know, but that's going to be nice. The fields over there are being used and people seem to really like the fields and like the facilities that's going over there, so it's been a great response from the town, which is good. Uh, the rec department's starting their summer programs coming up because school's almost over, so that's going to be going well. We are, one of our new hires at the police department has just finished her, um, through this, yeah, there you go, and so that's, she's all fully approved now, which is great, and I'm trying to make this as quick as possible. And everything else, the highway department's doing good, we're fully staffed and rolling and, uh, been really quiet at the recycling center and everything's going kind of smooth there, which is great, so there you go. And if you want anyone who's watching YouTube or looking up on the internet.
Mr. Mark, you. It's Bascom.
Uh, SRPC annual meeting is coming up and I still need to sign up for that, it's going to be at Three Chimneys, and there is, I mentioned to y'all at the last meeting, did you like that, y'all, um, that they had a plan that they wanted our input on and I couldn't remember all of it, it's the SRPC Active Transportation Plan, this is what it looks like, it is on SRPC website. We really truly want people to look at this and give input and especially, uh, the rec department, um, so I will follow up with them now that I've found it.
Thank you. Uh, I have a couple of things, um, the first is, I was, just to confirm, still awaiting response from town council on, um, a couple of requests that I've sent in, as soon as I get those, we would most likely go into non-public to review their, their responses, um, but one request was, uh, a question about potential lots in an abutting town access via a private road within Nottingham, um, some questions surrounding, surrounding that and what our options are, what our purview is there, um, and then that question from the conceptual that we had about the lot land bisected by our road, um, for a little bit more information on what the RSA is there, there, even our own regulations, um, so that's that. Another announcement I, I, I need to make sure that I make, and this is going to be, I'm making it to this board just to make sure we're all aware, it doesn't necessarily come from anything that's occurred from this board, it's just been reported to me, uh, by multiple, multiple times, so I want to make sure it's clear, uh, within our bylaws and, and our purview, is that no one from this board, from, and this is the only one I have authority over as chair, should, should approach or be talking to any current or potential applicants or property owners, um, about their properties or plans or conveying any kind of potential information that, that, things that don't, aren't in our zoning now may be allowed, um, so, I know it's kind of vague, but basically, with our purview, I mean, our bylaws, please be conscientious of, you know, conflicts, conflicts of interest and, um, we need to make sure we try to avoid the perception of conflict of interests or, and self-identify those when they may occur, um, we can ask questions of each other if we think we may potentially have a perceived conflict, um, we should not be reaching out to any property owners or potential applicants or current applicants, uh, directly. Anything that's directed between this board and an applicant should be going through the land use clerk, Mr. Haney, um, or myself, his chair in my absence, Mrs. Bascom is, is vice chair, no other member should be going directly to an applicant for anything.
In the past, Ed has asked me to, uh, you know, and the board has asked me to, to be more proactive, um, rather than having Lena have to manage a lot of the people. So if you do need somebody, you know, communication, feel free to reach out to me.
I try to use Blair as a liaison for everything, even when applicants strike right to me as the chair.
Yeah.
Because I think it's cleaner to avoid any attention perceived, you know, communications between a board member and applicant, uh, and again, it all goes into the record, but I prefer to make it clean and have everything go through either Alana directly or Blair, for their questions and their feedback, and Mr. Haney's been great about, uh, chugging in and helping guide applicants, especially.
What updates for me?
I have nothing to add.
Uh, I, Teresa, mention one, I'll just mention the date, uh, the SRPC annual meeting is the twenty-seventh, so that's two weeks from tomorrow, um, it is in Durham, so, um, I'll have you, um, and, uh, I think it starts at eleven, eleven AM.
What, it's the twenty-seventh?
Yep. Comes with lunch and then we have, uh, this year, we usually do a panel speakers, we're